So I wonder if you and I are going in if it matters that a couple of people are doing it, that it's not, but I've been doing the major. It really doesn't matter. That's all. I'm wondering if it's the way the three, six, you option is set. Come on. You're here. I almost said, "Good morning." There's a, there's a.
Is that your, your standard go-to? Good morning. Good morning.
Stay away as far as.
They're not as early as they used to be.
What about you? Well, I didn't, I just pushed it because it was.
It used to be much earlier.
Eleven, five, eight, nine.
At least my days do.
I'm bad at this candy.
So she'll just talk. I just will really watch going forward and I'll look to see what, um, what he would say. That's a good idea.
So Mark is not coming?
No.
I can put my purse here. I am following.
Trust the person next to me. If they were still under beer. Probably not. They play, they play yoga.
We've already got everything all connected for you, Don. Rich was in here earlier. Okay. Yep. You should have been nice, you're skinny, you want, get it out there. You haven't had that conversation yet. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it's. But again. It's close to what we were last year. But. Yes. Yep. Sherry is, Don, you gonna film this or video it?
Yes, he is.
Okay, I'll just wait for his light.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Stacey.
Oh, great.
That's ready. It'll come. This is how we go to. How comes there?
What?
We went to workshop.
Yeah.
Very slippery.
We got hit by a car.
Yeah. Did you get that recipe yesterday?
No.
It's excellent.
I was gonna ask you for it.
Yeah. And on the left is the pot roast and then the next two are what to do with leftovers.
Oh, nice.
It's kind of a pot roast anymore.
There aren't ever any leftovers.
Kind of a pot roast anymore.
I have a calendar, I can read that.
Well, you know, I can remember two, three years ago.
It's Judy's fault. Not until the time she died.
I'm not sure. And, and it's hard to get it from grandma. She's over a hundred, it's been a long, long time for her.
It's set out.
But she made it with mushroom soup.
I learned like riding a bike.
Well, that's what she would say.
To teach him this stuff and they don't see each other.
Reach deeper into the file cabinet than I do. That's what my barber was telling me today, how his memory is going, you know. Okay. I'd like to open up the meeting for the work session for independent eight thirty-four, just Stillwater area public schools. It's November fourteenth and I think we're set to begin. As you know, this is a relatively less formal procedure, so.
We're ready.
Administration, Denise, are we ready to go?
We're ready.
All right. Okay, well, tonight, the purpose of our work session tonight is to discuss Spanish immersion expansion considerations. And it's coming out of a request on October tenth, Don, there we go, thanks, that we explore options to gather information about the possible expansion. And so we've tried our best to put together some options tonight about what we can do. So to that end, we began trying to create a sandbox around this by making some assumptions as we went forward so that we could at least have a framework. And the assumptions are as follows. We want to minimize disruption to other programming through any type of expansion. We need to plan for a total of twelve sections. That would be two sections for each grade K five. That would take us out to twenty-two, twenty-three. That would be in line with where we are right now as we build out the program. Our financial assumptions are based on the fact that all sections currently at Lake Elmo would move. And the staffing assumptions are based on our standard allocation models that we use for any school, or elementary school. The next one, transition program would stay at Oak Park, moving the immersion program. It would stay with its current times and its current space. And all costs, so any costs that we see later on during this presentation are our current rates this year. We did not take into account any inflation, so costs moving forward, we did not take into account any contract increases as the program would move forward. Every time you enter any type of that, those variables in there, then that changes a whole nother scope of things. So we need just a place to start. So it'll be important as we move through it tonight that we go back and forth to these assumptions to make sure that, that we know the frame that we started from. Oh, and I lost my slideshow.
It's over there.
It's on the TV. It's still up.
Still up. All right, audience, you'll have to look over to your right if you want to see the slides. You may need to move closer because it's a bit smaller. So one of the things that we did, most people are aware of, we did a, we did an immersion or a survey of our current parents of Spanish immersion. And so what we wanted to do is just provide some context of what the current families are saying. And so if you look at this slide, and so for those people watching this, I'll read this, but sixty-three percent indicated that the location of Lake Elmo was important for their decision to enroll in the program as it is now. Twenty-one of the percent of the, of the people in the program would remain without transportation being provided. Fifty-one percent would remain in the program if transportation were provided. Forty-one percent would remain if the hours were adjusted so that we could provide transportation. And then we have sixty percent of our current families live in the Lake Elmo boundary. Thirty-four percent enroll alternately, and we have six percent that open and roll into the program. And so one of the questions I'm sure is, how many does that account for? And in the bottom right of this slide, you'll see that there were a hundred and sixty survey respondents, and there's a hundred and forty-five students enrolled K two currently. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kristin, or Kathy, rather, staffing costs.
So I'm gonna just walk you through the staffing model that we use to, to estimate the staffing. Keep in mind, Bob said, we use the eighteen, nineteen salary, so what the current rates are for averages, with the exception of paras, I have the actual average for this year because their contract is settled. We didn't try to estimate those numbers increasing over time because we don't know what they are. So keep in mind that these are, if this, these numbers were in place, there'd be some increase as you move forward through the years on implementation. Couple of things to let you know, what I did was, I took the Anderson staffing that we have in place right now because it's the closest school that we have to the size that it would be to move the Spanish immersion program. Anderson is within two to three FTE, so it's very close. So these numbers are not exact, but it should give you a pretty good idea. So with custodial staff, what you'll see, so you'll see two columns. The right side of the paper is the full implementation cost and the left, the middle column is the partial. What I did was tossed out the full implementation model and then backed it off to sixty-seven percent because if eight of the sections are there out of the twelve, you'd have about a sixty-seven percent of your staffing there. So I'm gonna go down the center column with you, but just know that the numbers came from backing off of the full model. Does that make sense? So with custodians, what we did is we took the custodial staffing that was in place at Oak Park and used that. So that is actual Oak Park custodial staffing, adjusted slightly because it's not a full program, so there'd be less classrooms to clean and less staff there. And then we also adjusted that number by seventy thousand because we already have custodial costs of seventy thousand that we're incurring this year. So it would, this would be the increase over that current cost. Health services is basically our health paras and our healthcare specialists. And you will see that that is the same on both sides because we're assuming that you still need the same amount of healthcare specialist and para time regardless of how many kids are there. The clerical support is the same thing. This is the allocation that, of the clerical support that's in place at Anderson right now. Less teachers and kids does not necessarily mean less clerical support, so you'll see that number is the same as well. Special ed teachers is a sixty-seven percent probation of the full model. And then with specialists, what we did is, because, well, let me go back, I skipped classroom teachers. So there's two other assumptions in here that are important. I'm assuming that all of the classroom teachers for Spanish immersion are picked up and moved to Oak Park. So I'm not costing any cost in there for Spanish immersion teachers. That is also the case with the Spanish immersion para that is in place. It's assumed that the Spanish immersion para will just be picked up and moved to another location, so there's no cost included for that as well. The specialists, because those kids already have specialist time at Lake Elmo, what I did is calculated what I would estimate as best I can, the travel time, because you'd still have specialist time, but now they have to travel to another location to serve those kids. So the cost that's included in the specialist is at, is basically the travel time, plus the school psych time is in there and the nurse is in there. And then the principal, instructional coach, and student advocate assumes a full principal, a full student advocate, and a half-time instructional coach, which is what Anderson has. And you'll see that those are the same because it's a base model that we use for staffing for all of our buildings. So if you get to the bottom of that center column, then you'll see it's about just over a million, one point zero two nine million for the staffing portion at implementation. And then once we have all twelve teachers there and the two sections per grade, it would jump up to about one point two five four million. Any questions on that piece? Does that make sense?
So, sorry. Is our per pupil expenditures approximately twelve thousand dollars right now? So, so I'm trying to get a sense of, if, if we were gonna expand the program, how many new students would we need to have enroll in the program in order to cover those costs? And I'm thinking it's around a hundred. Is that correct?
Well, so what we typically generate in revenue, if that's the question you're asking, and I'm not sure that it is, but that's what I'm gonna answer, and let me know if I miss. Usually, the, the number I've used is ten thousand dollars. Secondary kids are slightly more than that, elementary kids are slightly less than that. But just, if you're just trying to say, what does an elementary student generate, assume ten thousand dollars. So, you know, if you had two kids come in, you have twenty thousand dollars. And so that's what, in addition to what our current population is. Again, just to provide context, they would need to be new students because the transferring of students doesn't gain us additional revenue. They would need to be kids coming, either, that are not currently enrolled in our population.
Well, I'm kind of thinking that, you know, there may be some students that are currently at St. Croix Prep, for example, that might really want a Spanish immersion option and they don't have that. So we, that might be a place where we could draw from. That's just a thought.
So just with that, the way the Spanish immersion program works, we wouldn't be taking kids that are not kindergarten and/or potentially first grade students. So.
Say that again?
You wouldn't be taking, for example, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be just taking fourth grade students or fifth grade students. They start and matriculate up.
Right.
So we wouldn't from, for the example of taking from St. Croix Prep, it, you wouldn't necessarily be getting anyone back from St. Croix Prep because they would have already started at St. Croix Prep.
Well, if there was a kindergartner that was, the parents were trying to decide if they wanted to go to St. Croix Prep or our school.
Sure.
That would be.
In that case, yes.
Yeah.
I, I think at one of our recent meetings, we said, there was an age, if you were gonna bring somebody over, where it's still doable. Is it go back to K always, or does it go back to first grade? Or kids, can kids be picked up along the way into the program?
You're right, kindergartner, first grade.
Okay. Somebody else had it in hand.
But also, it'd be, it'd be possible to pick up people that were Spanish-speaking natives because those people, those students are in the classes too.
Mm-hmm.
It, it seemed to me, the figures that you had up there, because one was full and one, if you're going to do this, and I say that's big if, but if you're gonna do this, the big costs are upfront when you, when you start the original move. Because once you're there, going from there to full, it's, it's not as big. I think it was over two hundred thousand, which is a big amount of money, but the biggest costs are when you initially do this.
Right. Keep in mind, too, that if, you know, the survey had talked about fifty-one percent said they would go if it went to another location. If you do have fifty percent of the kids stay, keep in mind, these costs are gonna be off because we've assumed specialists move and that specialist time is gonna have to stay. So you may have to add some specialist time or some of those other costs that you only assume travel for. You might have to make some adjustments, so it may not work out this cleanly if it was just half of the kids moving.
How many people, how many students are currently on the waiting list for Spanish immersion?
What did we?
Handful.
Yeah, it's a handful, I think six was the, I wanna say six was the, when it was all said and done this year.
Yes, I believe that's correct. I think it was four, one and one.
Am I close, Rachel? Six, we're on six? I have the number, I can pull it up while we continue on to make sure I'm right, but I think it was six.
Thank you.
Is there an attrition rate at all with the present program? You know, like I'm, normally, the traditional foreign language, you might start off with sixty kids. You lose some who don't take second year, third year. Is there something similar like that here or not?
Yeah.
Or it hasn't shown up?
We've only lost one over the three years.
Okay, which is very encouraging.
I mean, even with moving in and out, we've only lost one student. That's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Two quick questions.
This PowerPoint, is this available somewhere? Because I wasn't able to see this beforehand. Can we get this, can we get a copy of this? This presentation, can we get a copy of it?
I do have the answer to the waitlist.
At the time of the lottery, which is when they do the initial draw, and it depends on the tier, but tier two had fifteen and tier three had eleven. So in total, at the time of the lottery, the waitlist was twenty-six for nineteen, twenty. After the application deadline and the lottery, so as the process worked its way through, we had one student in tier one, two students in tier two, and two students, students in tier three. So there was five on a waiting list after we had gone through the process.
Right, so probably people are making a different choice and they don't want to continue waiting, you know. I, I would think that a lot of people would, you know, there, it's gonna be an either or, and if they get on a waiting list, they're gonna have to choose something else. And once they choose that, they probably take themselves off, I would guess. But can I just ask really quick, too, the survey that was done?
Mm-hmm.
Was that people in the program?
Yep.
So those are, right now, we do not provide transportation for that program. If it's, if I understand correctly, most, most of the students that are in the program now are natural Lake Elmo students. So that's why the transportation piece is so important because if you're at Lake Elmo, you can be in the program.
Right.
If you're not at Lake Elmo, it's really difficult because we don't provide transportation.
Right, as the slide indicates, that Bob had spoke to regarding the parent survey, sixty percent are currently in boundaries. So sixty percent are receiving transportation because that's their, that's their home attendance area.
Okay. And so then forty percent are, have parents who are driving them. They're driving them to Lake Elmo.
There's more slides, right?
There is.
Yes.
So the only thing, before we got off the slide, Mike, just to your question, just so everybody knows, these are, this is annual, this is the additional annual cost to what we're spending now. So these are not one-time costs. The full implementation at twenty-two, it's one point two million a year to do it this way.
Assuming everything goes.
Assuming everything goes.
Hundred percent potential. Okay, we're moving on to transportation. There are essentially two options because they provide two different dollar amounts for us. One would be the current bell times. So this programming at Oak Park would stay at the eight forty AM start with a three-ten release. It does align with all of our elementary schools. Those bell times were slightly off at Stonebridge, but that's five minutes. In the event that the program moved and we stayed with the, the model of our current elementary times, we would need to add somewhere between eight to ten buses. And you can see the estimated cost increase in, in the range, depending on if it's, you know, eight, nine, or ten. It ranges from four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. So we're talking a half a million dollar increase to align with our, our current bell times. That also does not include if there's special needs transportation. That's just reflective of moving the kids in large buses and no special needs transportation that would be included. There is, and as you guys know, there is a driver shortage with our current fleet, so that would be stressful to add another eight to ten, to buses to our, to our current system. Then if you looked and said, what if we can do it a little different and do the adjusted bell times, which is actually our tier three schedule, nine twenty AM to three fifty PM? This aligns with our private, private and charter schools. We wouldn't necessarily need to add buses, but we would have a cost increase in, in the distribution. Essentially, it would be, for those of you that recall, we had a shuttle system in place for Marine and Withrow, and it would be dropping off at a particular elementary school and then shuttling north. It would resemble that, so you have a small cost increase, but we do have the capacity, for the most part, on our buses in tier three. That tier traditionally has longer route times. You know, there's incidentals to consider, too, that are impactful, depending, you know, as we move forward. We don't want to get too in-depth, depending on the way the board wants to go with this conversation. If you do that model with the, the potential shuttle piece of it, we could be, right now, St. Croix Catholic is where everybody, like, kind of comes together and they have staffing that watch that. If, that, depending on the number of kids that are participating, that could end up switching to Oak Park, of which then we would need potentially staffing to facilitate the transfer of students. I mean, again, those are, there's a lot of conversation here, but this just at least gives you the first blush of what we would be looking at as it relates to the transportation of, of the students. I will actually move on to the next slide.
Before you do that, Kristin?
Yeah.
I, I'm just trying to understand it, right now, kind of the movement where they go off from St. Croix Catholic, and so you're saying there's some people watch buses, help kids, that sort of thing. Who pays them for that?
Catholic. It's their staffing that's watching.
So if we moved it to Oak Park, we're picking up a new cost? I mean, that's in essence what you're saying.
Can I have a clarification, Chair?
Please.
So just to clarify your statement on this, on this slide, to keep the current bell times and have the students move over to Oak Park, you're looking at a pro, give or take, between four thirty-six and five forty-six K per year?
Yes.
Additional in transportation. And in that, in that subset, fifty-one percent of parents who were surveyed said that they would accept that, that model, if, if you will. And on the other side, which now the camera is on me, and I, and, okay, thank you, thanks, Don. The adjusted bell time, the adjusted bell time side, sixty-six K, but approximately forty-one percent of parents said that they would remain in, in the program. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. That's correct.
Thank you.
For those that have their iPad up, I just shared, if you have your email up, I just shared the slide deck with you.
Awesome, thank you.
Any questions, at least at the moment, for transportation? Otherwise, I will move on. The next piece, and, and Mike had referenced this earlier, it was a great segue, unfortunately, it was just two slides after he mentioned it, into there's initial costs that go into, to getting the program started. And so this slide would indicate the estimated capital expenditures at Oak Park. When that building was closed, there were items that were moved to different buildings and items that we could allow to let go, things we could do differently. And so I wanted to highlight at least what would probably need to be done to get the building up and running, if you will, and then the additional improvements that would need to come eventually. Technology would be about four hundred thousand. This would be inclusive of all classroom technology. There is not, there's no, I don't know if there's smartboards now or what they're called, but there's nothing in a classroom anymore that would help students with their, with their learning environment. Playground resurfacing, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, we do still have money available to them in the bond for the surface. That's about a hundred thousand, but the playground hasn't been upgraded at all for years. The media center, this would be books, this would be the shelving units, this would be where the media specialist sits. Fire marshal upgrades, we would anticipate him coming through and, and providing feedback on safety areas. Drop-off areas, one hundred thousand dollars. This, what this means is kind of back as it relates to the transportation component. When Oak Park was operating as an elementary school, we had a handful of bus, we had like six buses, regular ed buses, we had specialized buses and, you know, vans, different things, but the regular ed buses were six. And now we would be talking, depending on the model, potentially up to eight to ten. And so where, where car, the carpool lane is and the bus staging at the end, you know, you can, you have the parking lot on the side, which is used by transition, and we actually keep type-three vehicles there now. Because with transition being there and the storage of vehicles being there, and now potentially the addition of buses, we need to create another space to either move where the type-three vehicles are for transition and some, to, to be able to stage pickup in the parking lot. There would be something we would need to do parking lot-wise if they stayed on the same bell time schedule. I'd say maybe we'd still need to do it if, even if we went to the third tier, but we would definitely need to do it if it was at the second tier bell schedule. And what we would do is then there's a, like a basketball court that's on the other side of the building that hasn't really been used. We'd convert that into parking areas for staff and different things where they could get in and out of the building while we try to stage everything that's going on. So the drop-off areas, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollar increase. Hallway lockers, lockers were removed from that building and moved over to Stillwater Middle, so we would need to add hallway lockers. Sight lighting, this was mentioned even at, at times, even when the board was conducting their meetings there, that the sight lighting wasn't ideal. That would be forty thousand dollars. Staff relocation, again, just picking up, moving classrooms, offices, that sort of thing, that costs money. The kitchen and cafeteria would be an additional expense. We, we don't have, we need to get it up to, up to code again. We'd need to get trays, different things that go along with the kids eating. Everything with the music has the risers, everything is gone, and then the nurse's office. So you can see there, at least to get it up to grade with the experience that the, that these students are having in another school, the capital cost, without deducting for the playground bond money, would be one point three one million. And then additional improvements, and we've talked about these in our long-term facility maintenance conversations and our ten-year plan. Classroom upgrades, you're talking casework, you know, carpeting, those sorts of things. Converting the steam heat to water, the domestic water replacement. We know even when that building was operating as an elementary school that that was an issue. And then with all of that work, you automatically have asbestos abatement and construction costs. And so this is just an overview of what that would mean to get the building operating back in, in a, in a prior form.
Before you go off that slide, why would there be more buses than there were when Oak Park was full?
Be, when, because it's the, it's the area that you're drawing from, Liz. So when Oak Park is running, we, we didn't transport out of an attendance area. So you just ran the attendance area, you could be far more efficient as far as, we could fill buses to capacity and therefore have less buses. When you're trying to cover the entire district, so from Marine and to, you know, you've got a hundred and fifty square miles, you lose the efficiency of the number of kids you can fit on a bus because we run out of time. Meaning, you know, we have a procedure that says we won't have a kid on a bus, pretty much from bell to the moment they walk in the door, longer than seventy-five minutes. Just given the sheer distance, we have bus, we would have buses and, and again, making it up of fifteen to twenty-five kids because we can't fit kids in that timeframe of what we've deemed as acceptable to be on a school bus. And so you, just by, just based on that then, because you're drawing from the entire district, you increase the number of buses. Okay. Because of that.
And then when Oak Park was open, the buses just used the front of the building? So are you saying that that would be different? That's where buses pick up and drop off were, just in the semicircle in the front? So you're saying there'd need to be a different area?
What I would do, what we would do is, because we don't want, what we don't want is student traffic and carpool traffic interfering with, so carpool, drop-off and pickup, we would, we don't want buses and carpool trying, crossing paths. And Rutherford's are the best example. We've designed Oakland that way now, too, where you never technically cross buses and kids walking with, with cars. And so if you use that entrance now on the side where there was staff parking before, we also have transition parking over there.
And then, when Oak Park was open, the buses just used the front of the building? So are you saying that that would be different? That's where buses pick up and drop off were, just in the semicircle in the front? So you're saying there'd need to be a different area?
What I would do, what we would do is, because we don't want, what we don't want is student traffic and carpool traffic interfering with, so carpool, drop-off and pickup, we don't want buses and carpool crossing paths. And Rutherford's are the best example. We've designed Oakland that way now, too, where you never technically cross buses and kids walking with cars. And so if you use that entrance now on the side where there was staff parking before, we also have transition parking over there, and we're going to have carpool, and with added buses, there's just not enough room. We'd have to take over for staff parking, the small basketball court on the other side, for staff parking, just to allow for room for carpool, or put transition over there, and then you still have the staff parking and carpool. That's why. So that's what we would be looking at, it's the sheer number.
Okay. Sure.
Can you talk a little bit more about what you mean by classroom upgrades for 1.55?
Sure. Classroom upgrades would be door replacement, classroom restroom, that would be specific to, well, it's pre-K, the smaller toilets, casework, student classroom furniture, teacher classroom furniture. I mean, we have different things in there, and we scaled down the number, but the upgrades would be, again, casework, door replacement, carpeting, potential restrooms, furniture, that sort of thing that's going in a classroom. Because the only thing that exists right now, and I know you guys have taken a tour of the building, is kind of what was left from all of the buildings.
Right. And when we toured for the community design team, we went and looked at the spaces that the transition students are using now, and they did not get any upgrades. Like, they're still using space that's designed for kindergartners.
Yep.
And so, I guess, to me, that is evidence that, while it's not ideal, we need to look at that as well. It's certainly optional. We wouldn't necessarily have to spend $1.5 million on classroom upgrades.
Yeah.
These are things, to me, I wonder if some of these things are maybe optional things.
Well, that's why it says additional improvements. I'm not suggesting that you do the first column under total capital. I think you're probably going to need to. Anything under long-term facility maintenance, that does come under board discussion of what you have every year to say, are we going to do this or not? That's why it's listed. It was broken out separately.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And then, capital expenditures, now, that's coming from separate bucket of money. It's not operating, so these are one-time costs.
Correct.
To do these upgrades. And would there, do we, we have money in a capital fund right now to cover some of these things, wouldn't we?
If you choose to do that, yes.
If you choose to. Right. Thank you.
Shelley.
That was my question, whether we had the capital.
Jennifer.
I just wanted to announce, I'm sorry I was five minutes late. I'm kind of also covering Director Burns tonight with questions. He submitted some questions, and I did get some questions from a Lake Elmo parent, and I promised her that I would do my best to ask a couple of them for her.
Please do.
So, and I think, Kristin, I'm hoping this can go to you. The school board had to cut $2.1 million last year. Where are you going to find the 600K plus for this move? Currently, there isn't transportation for the Spanish immersion program because of funding. Wouldn't the first step be offering transportation for students to the program at Lake Elmo? And I'm not sure who can tackle that, but I thought it was certainly a valid concern.
Could be.
I think those are all board discussions, right? I mean, they're just, they're costs. We don't currently have transportation. We're aware of that, so that would be something that the board would discuss as part of whatever option you choose, whether you include transportation or not.
Kristin, question I have, just switching a little bit, and I'm glad you've got that, because, you know, somewhere, just like, and where this gets very complicated very quickly, is we're going to be doing things long-range anyway in the future. And some of that is going to occur over there, or it's going to occur here. And, but, and again, this is just for purposes of discussion. If we were to move the program from Lake Elmo, we would free up how many classrooms at Lake Elmo for other needs? In other words, if 51% of the kids came with, and again, that may be too high, maybe too low, but that's what we've got to go on at this point. So those kids move and they go to Oak Park.
So right now, we have six sections, so assume six classrooms this year. Next year, we would assume eight classrooms.
So if half go.
So if half go, you'd have four.
Okay. So that would free up a lot of space there for other purposes.
It would, but now you're double staffing, because our assumptions are based on all sections, like, no kid stays back. And if half of them decide to move, you've now, when the assumption is made that you move that many teachers, you're now splitting, you're now doubling the presentation that, or the slide that Kathy talked about, staffing. So, true, you absolutely free up classrooms, no matter what the model. We try to be the most optimistic as far as program participation.
Yep.
And one thing I would like.
So does that model, then, and again, sorry for the interruption. Does that model assume that half the kids stay and you attempt to maintain the program?
It's 100%. Everything we've assumed assumes 100%. Anything, again, we wanted to present, you know, the most optimistic view of the program, and to do that, we had to assume everything goes, which is then the most cost-efficient model of moving the program.
It's also the least complicated to calculate.
Yeah. Jennifer. Thanks, Chair. You know, for me, I just look at this, you know, had we expanded Brookview, that would have been effectively no extra cost to the taxpayers, and we'd be on our way now and almost, I don't know when, if, I don't know when that would have been complete, but I feel like pretty soon. And if we're using this as rationale to, you know, make space at Lake Elmo, I think, you know, I think it's a little scary, especially given, you know, you're looking at total capital 1.3, okay, that's bad enough, but the, with the total amount, which is on that other slide, per year, you know, and I, that, where are we going to get that? And that was Director Burns's last question of many, but what budget cuts will be made in order to support the new general fund expenses required for the program moved, such as transportation and building administration? And those are things that, you know, given the fact we just made 2.1 million in cuts, and we can't even afford our reading curriculum, or, I'm sorry, our writing curriculum.
Can I just respond to that real quick?
Sure.
And I think, at least to try to mitigate some of that concern, I think the idea is, one, that the Brookview expansion is separate from Lake Elmo, and I don't think that we were intending to change boundaries necessarily, so that if we did the Brookview expansion, it wouldn't really impact the crowding at Lake Elmo. This was an idea that was intended to try to free up some space at Lake Elmo. So it's sort of separate, in my mind, from Brookview. And the reason why you want to do that is because it's a great program, and there's a lot of people who want to be in it, and we don't have space to grow it at Lake Elmo. And if we had more space, I think we'd have more people involved in it. And if we had more people involved in it, those new people coming into the district, whether they're outside the district, or if they're at St. Croix Prep or another charter school, or a private school or something, those people bring with them their $12,000 ahead from the state. So that's where the money comes from.
I agree, and I like that, and I appreciate that, Sarah, and I think you've got the survey saying half of the parents would move. That's not freeing up much space. Long-term, I'd love to look at expansion of dual immersion in some capacity. One of the community design team members messaged me and said, you know, what about expanding it at, like, Rutherford, or in different parts of the district? And I think we're selling ourselves short by this one-and-done, that at an incredible, incredible expense out of our general fund, which is constantly strapped, versus thinking about, you know, long-term, how might we build that program and add residents from all over, all over the place, basically, right?
I completely agree with you, 100%. I think there's a lot of different ways that we might be able to expand this program. This was just one idea, and the added benefit of talking about it now is that it would possibly help, the question I'm raising is whether it would help alleviate the crowding at some of the other buildings that we have in the South. If there are students at Brookview, or students at Afton Lakeland, or students at Anderson, who would like to be in the Spanish immersion program, and they can't right now because they can't do transportation, and if we invited them and they came, that would free up space in those other pretty full buildings as well. So that's the only added benefit of this thought.
So adding on to Brookview.
Liz, and I'll go back to you.
The Brookview thing, we have to remember that of the eight classrooms we're talking about, five of them are going to go, five of them are already in places where they're not supposed to be, so the net of classrooms we're adding is three. And then, as far as putting Spanish immersion in another school, I don't know that any of them have the space.
Yeah. That's true. Okay, we should probably get.
Yeah, and I want to clarify the capital question, just because I cut my thought short, and I don't want to make presumptions that my, that people are living in my head. That doesn't typically work well. Anyway, when I'm speaking to the capital budget and saying, yes, we have the money there and we can do it, please be aware that, you know, it is one-time money, and that once it's spent, it's gone. And as we work ourselves through the long-term design, it also could be money used in other places. So once it's spent, it's gone, and it possibly could have been used in other spaces, so I just don't want to get the impression like, oh, yeah, we have it. It might be, you know, but you've used it here, or we might be able to do something to offset what the design team does for the long-range projects. So just kind of maybe, just that, maybe that's more of a complete thought that I have. The other thing that I would like to mention, and I recognize that it's not about program growth, and it's not about bringing kids in, just to the sheer, can we alleviate pressure off of Lake Elmo? We can through existing boundary changes, and we've talked about that at the finance working group, too, that we could do boundaries without, you know, without adjusting a program to alleviate pressure. We can do that, and we can make that work. And so, just so everybody understands that, again, it's not addressing what I had believed was your charge of having a program to be able to grow and do different things. It's not talking about that at all. It's merely talking about addressing growth.
Yeah, and I think it hits on something Denise said earlier, too. This is one of many options. There's a lot of different ways to go. What strikes me, because I like the idea, too, of perhaps even looking at expansion other places, the hard part is, I think one of the reasons Lake Elmo has been a success is half the students are Spanish-speaking to begin with, and that's really, if you're kickstarting, boy, that sure helps.
Yeah. I will, just because I'm trying to watch the time and be cognizant of where we are in the discussion, I just want to kind of draw your attention to the last slide, which is the summary slide. And you can see just the breakdown of what we were talking about. Maybe one thing I'd like to just remind everybody is, when looking at the staffing costs of $1 million, that's with the entire program moving. Now, if you assume half are going to go due to a change in location, you can probably add about a half a million dollars to that number, because now we're double-staffing. We're, you know, our specialists are staying at Lake Elmo, half of our sections are still staying at Lake Elmo. So that, again, that is the most optimistic view of 100% participation moves to Oak Park, otherwise, that number goes up. In talking about the increased costs for operations, this was added, because honestly, there was no slide to put it into. So there's this natural utility costs that go along with what we're currently doing, garbage increase, water usage increase. There are different things happen in a building when it's occupied by students for 172 days, and so that's reflective of, you know, the $30,000 to $50,000. It could be, not that we don't plow, but it, all the services amp up as far as utilities go when you have more bodies in a building. And then this, just, then you can see capital, again, assuming one-time money. That's why it becomes zero in the second column. Long-term facility maintenance, again, yes, it is a choice of what you want to do, but then you're provided the transportation range as well. And so you can see kind of the range of what we'd be looking at of all costs, whether we take the minimalist approach or, you know, go full-speed ahead with everything. That's what you're looking at. And again, I just can't explain more, and we talked about this as we were working ourselves through the presentation of, you know, the what-ifs. What if half goes? What if, how do we show that? How do we present that? And given this, given our charge of just trying to present what this could look like, we assumed optimism, but I think you need to be aware that if it doesn't, if we don't get 100% participation, the costs go up.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? For the audience's sake, and perhaps most of you know that, we are going to close the meeting probably in about 10 minutes, because the board is going to meet and close session on negotiations. Jennifer.
Chair, I'm going to take a stab at this. This is another from Director Burns. So Director Burns is asking, what would be the expected enrollment losses with the move of the program from Lake Elmo to Oak Park? And then he added an A and a B to this, among District 834 residents, and also among potential open enrollees living in densely populated areas adjacent to Lake Elmo. And he made the little sub-comment here, the Lake Elmo location for the program is much closer geographically to the population, to this population than District 834's Nueva's Fronteras. Well, I hope I got that right. Spanish immersion program in Cottage Grove. So I thought it was, I'm not sure, I thought that was a very good concern. I don't know how that can be answered, perhaps not today.
Bob, didn't you touch on that a little bit when you were talking about where the present students are coming from?
Well, we have, Kristin has a list, and we track both in district and out of district where they come from. I think it depends upon, again, what assumption are you going to put around it? So if you assume 50%, then do you take those numbers, and regardless of their, if they're an altenrol or they're an out-of-district, you cut them in half? I don't know. That's going to be hard to predict, how many, I mean, it's a family choice, so I don't know how you predict that without specific.
You could start from just looking at who's doing that right now, coming from out-of-district and going into.
Do we have those?
Well, we do. We have the numbers that are coming from out-of-district. Unfortunately, I haven't necessarily pulled the location, but I will go off of recall that I believe we have, in Lake Elmo, in Oakland, just as a general rule, certainly, the majority of the population that we see, at least in those particular two schools, are coming on in request from 622, which is North St. Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale. I would imagine that would be reflective in the Spanish immersion as well, given the proximity of the programming to the boundary. Again, we have 82 out of 144 students that are at Lake Elmo. And then you have your smattering, right? You have, no, I have, that's the sheet I have. You know, you have 5% to 6% coming from Afton Lakeland, you've got, you know, 4% to 5% coming from Brookview, so are those too south and absent of.
Wait a second. I guess I'm wondering, weren't you asking for from out-of-district?
Out-of-district, again, both. He asked for both.
Oh, he asked for both.
But out-of-district, like I say, it's a presumption. My presumption is that most of our out-of-district is probably coming from 622, we might get a few from 833, which is South Wash.
But are we talking about a huge number? Are we talking about probably a few?
The number is, three, four, six? We're going six?
Okay.
That's close enough? Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
And then, can I ask also, since we're talking about numbers? You said there are about 145 in the program now, K through two. So that's two sections per grade.
Correct.
So if we were going to expand, we'd be starting with a section of kindergarten. So it's not like you, you're going to just add all of those grades. You start again with a third, like, you'd have a third section of kindergarten, but not a first grade necessarily.
Correct.
And then it would just continue to grow right behind. And how many, so one of the things I have heard from community members, and I really do deeply understand and respect, is the fact that the program as it is now is dual immersion, and that suits the population at Lake Elmo. And a lot of people don't want to upset that balance, you know, to upset that sort of cultural experience that's already been established there, and I think moving it probably would be a big, you know, that would be a big change for a lot of people. What about the idea of keeping a portion of, or keeping some part of the dual immersion program at Lake Elmo and expanding Spanish immersion that's not dual immersion elsewhere in the district?
I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know, I guess I'd ask, what if? It depends upon where you put it, depends upon how many, now you're back to starting from scratch. So let's say that you keep everything at Spanish immersion, now it's no different than moving any other program. Are we starting with kindergarten? How many sections? Where can it live? And how long can it live in that building before it has to then be moved somewhere else? And what's the long-range plan? And what's the long-range plan for that?
And do we know how many of the current students of the 145 that are there, how many of them are native Spanish speakers? Do we know what that ratio is?
So, we currently have 17 total Spanish-language speakers in the program.
Okay.
And, yes. We have a higher rate, though, if you're just looking at ethnicity in the program, than Spanish speakers.
So, there are non-Spanish, not, there, there are ELL students that are not Spanish speakers?
Just students.
Just students.
Of various differentities.
Okay, got it, got it.
Yep.
Okay.
One of the things, too, the board might want to consider, you know, we talked earlier about not providing transportation for a whole lot less than you're seeing up there. You could expand the program by providing transportation and switching how many sections you might eventually have, Lake Elmo be a Spanish immersion school.
Mm-hmm.
Fully.
Sure.
Just sorry, but back to the, back to the, the money. So, are we, so is it safe to say at a minimum $2.4 million, 1.3 out of our total capital, between 2.4 and 6.7 to get K to three implemented by fall of 2020? And then we would have to go into a cut situation out of our current budget? Anyone? I don't know even...
The numbers that are on this screen reflect what I heard you say. Yes, it's the assumption that if you picked up that program, as is, all, and you, and you made it K3 next year at Oak Park, our estimation, depending upon the choices you would make, would be between 2.4 and 6.7. And then the following year, and two years out, so that when it became a true or a full K5, your annual costs would be additional, addition to what we're spending now would be 1.3 to 1.8 a year.
Every single year?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it's important, too, and Sarah, I think you brought this up. I don't, I want to make sure that what doesn't get missed in this is that, in addition to just the simple cost and the physical plant, there's a lot of cultural change, time, energy, decisions that have been made over a long period of time to get even what we have as a dual immersion program in place to where it is now. Things like ensuring that we have staff that speak the native language, that we have more than just our licensed teacher. So, the reason I bring that up is as we, one thing I just want to make sure, as we continue to explore ideas like this, that when we take a program that is as large, I would say, in-depth as this one is, maybe not in numbers at this point, but there's a lot that goes into the actual culture of the building that surrounds just even a K through two program right now at Lake Elmo. So, just, just make sure that it's not, we're not, it's not just about the numbers.
Yeah, I agree with that. And can I say, sorry?
Sure.
One of the other thoughts that I have about this program that's a little bit of a concern, and I don't know very much about how the, this type of program grows through the years. So, right now, if we just have across our district, two sections of Spanish-speaking classes, what does that look like when those students are in middle school?
Yep.
You know, when they hit seventh grade, are they still, is it still two sections? And are they kind of like separated from, I mean, what, do we have...
Those are the types of, yep. Those are the types of decisions, actually, that we would start planning, and we've talked about, that we'd start planning on this year as we move up, because some things that have to be decided are specifically, what does the programming look like? Minimally, what it typically looks like in districts at the middle level is you look at, what are the courses in the middle school that you want to have a dual licensed teacher? So, or a Spanish-speaking teacher in this case, that can teach Spanish, or can teach science. For example, in, in my experience, that's what we, we had a teacher that taught math and a teacher that taught science, but they also spoke Spanish. So, they were able to teach those sections in Spanish. That's one way of, of doing it, so that those cohorts of students are at least getting some, if, as I would imagine, all the way up to all of their courses still in Spanish. But those would be the, the types of plans we would start making now as we move, get ready to do a, into third grade, right? We're getting two years out, which means we need to start thinking about staffing and licensure and how we're going to post positions, no different than we did when we were planning for the kindergarten year. It was, you, you work yourself up to get to about that 18-month mark, so that you have all of your ducks in a row, so that you, you know how to communicate to families. This is really what this is going to look like. We also need to decide where. What, what middle school is this going to be in? Is it going to be in one? Is it going to be in both? What does all that mean? The other thing to remember with that is, depending upon how many students, that also dictates how many sections that you're running, and does that have implications for how you're staffing the rest of the building? So, there's a lot that goes into it.
Sorry, yeah, and I think there's some attrition, too, you know, of students that decide to not stay...
There could be.
...over time, so then that is challenging as well.
I, I have a question. It's more rhetorical at this point, but I think it has a little bearing on...
So, should I not answer?
See, you don't have to. You don't have to, but I can throw it to the group. If we extend this out, say even for the next five, six years, and every year you're, you're adding classes, are there additional costs to that than if they were just doing traditional?
So, I would say yes.
Rhetorical question, Bob.
It doesn't sound like a rhetorical question to me. I have a feeling people want to hear an answer to that one. There are costs that go when we expand into the next level of classroom. For example, every year that we add a section to the progression, there's going to be a classroom cost to that section for appropriate books, appropriate materials, because they're not just sitting on a shelf right now. So, the answer's yes.
I just, thank you for making that, that statement, Bob. I wanted to put an exclamation point on that. While this presentation was mostly about dollars and figures, we absolutely cannot lose sight of the fact that these are families that have been, it took, it wasn't built in a day, and to dismantle it in a day would be, would be very disappointing in, in not giving a voice to these families. It took a long time to create the culture of this building and that program. And while the, your presentation didn't touch upon that enough, I want to thank you for raising that. I, I agree wholeheartedly with that.
Okay. All right, we're going to adjourn to closed session. We will reconvene down here at 6:00.
I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Stillwater Area Public Schools, Independent School District 834. This is our meeting, and tonight is November 14th, and it's about two minutes after 6:00 PM. Secretary, please call the rule.
Chair Potachek?
Present.
Vice Chair Pearson?
Here.
Treasurer Weisberg?
Here.
Clerk Stivland?
Here.
Director Burns? Director Pelletier?
Here.
Director Riley?
Here.
You have a quorum chair.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it looks like our white on the flag is out, so we'll have to get that fixed. District mission statement?
I have that. The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools, in partnership with students, family, and community, is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you. And school board goals?
In partnership with community, parents, and students, the school board of Stillwater Area Public Schools ensures excellence in education by increasing student achievement for all students, securing long-term financial stability of the district, increasing community trust and engagement.
Thank you both. And now we're moving on to approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Shall we move? Is there a second?
One second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your right hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. And Jen, you want to wait till we go further?
Yeah, until we get to consent, thank you.
Superintendent's report. Superintendent Pontreille.
Thank you. Good evening. I just have a few things, because I think many of our board members will be sharing about some of the events of this week, but just wanted to let the community know that if you weren't able to attend, we had a work session with the board called Limitless Learning, and it was a presentation really on all things about our learning system and the alignment we have, the assessments we give, and it was the first of another session that we'll have and be following up on some work with our principals, how they work with our staff, with PLCs, and looking at their data to improve the strategies that we use to help support student learning. So I'd like to thank Dr. McDowell, Melinda Fier, Westberg, and Rachel Larson for that presentation. I think it was very well received by the board, and for those of you who haven't had time, I hope you'll take some time to take a look at that learning presentation. Last Friday, we had the Legislative Breakfast, which was very well attended. We had students there. A number of our students came and shared their thoughts with the legislature, legislative representatives who came. We had our board members and really a good crowd, I think the biggest one that we've had yet. And then also, we'd like to acknowledge and thank our veterans. On Monday, as you know, it was Veterans Day, and throughout our schools, we had many celebrations of the veterans who've given their time and energy to help support us and keep us safe over the years, and I'd like to thank our PTO and parent groups, because many of them had a large part of making those presentations happen for us on Veterans Day.
Thank you very much. And now we move to introductory items, student report.
To start off, Student Council will be having our annual overnight, in which we plan the rest of the year, so that's going to be events like Blast Week and Battle of the Bands and Snowball, which we do have a lot of students attending at the high school. This month is Native American Heritage Month, and to celebrate NASA, the Native American Student Association at our high school has put up true facts all around the school. One that I just saw the other day was that Native Americans serve at a higher rate and a higher concentration of female service members than any or all services in the military, the US military. And during our passing time, we do have some music that plays in this whole entire month. I do believe that they are going to be playing Native American songs and chants during those passing times, and it's been an exciting month so far. I can't wait to see what they have left in store. For the past two weeks now, students have been able to go to speakers during flex time, and these speakers align with our four pathways within our school building: arts, business, STEM environment, health, science, and human services. And basically, what happens is you just go and pick one of these rooms to go and listen to the speakers, and it's a lot of members within our committees, a community that comes in, and so we're really thankful that they have come and shed a little bit light of, you know, the things that they do for a living.
And then various intramural and winter sports have either already started or are starting up at the beginning of December. The winter and holiday tickets for our music program, the orchestra band and choir, go on sale on December 1st. I know a lot of students and community members are looking forward to buying those tickets. They do sell out fast. We have a state champion from the cross-country girls team, Anna Weaver. She was the individual champion, and she also qualified for Nationals. That will be taking place at the beginning of December. The girls swim and dive team were the conference and section champions, and they qualified 13 of their athletes for the state meet this weekend at the U of M. And then yesterday was NCAA Signing Day, and 13 of our students are receiving financial scholarships to continue their athletic careers at the collegiate level. And that was just really exciting to see some of our peers and where they're going to continue playing sports. Thank you.
Go Ponies. Nice job. Thank you both. And now we're talking, we're going with district recognition, and I'll turn that over to our superintendent. I believe it's Rotary, Rotary support rather, for media centers.
Yes, thank you. As many of you know, the Rotaries within the valley are very supportive of our schools in many different ways, and I'd like to ask John Perry to come, and John is going to share with you a little bit and ask the volunteers who are here tonight to tell you a little bit about how they're supporting our media centers.
Good evening. I'm very excited to share with you the work of the Stillwater Rotary Club with our elementary schools. The district has the Idea Quest, which is our crowdsourcing platform for getting ideas to improve the district. And a year ago, one of the ideas that came through was about improving support in our media centers. And so a team of us got together, and we've been working on this issue, and kind of our, how might we, we sort of came to, in order to improve our media centers, was how might we make sure that our licensed media specialists are spending their time with kids and not so much time shelving books, repairing books, sorting books? As we know, there's a lot of pressure on their time, and so every minute that they're spending with the book collection, they're not spending with students, and that's where their teaching license is the most valuable. So how do we get this program off the ground? You know, we, kind of a shot in the dark, we went to our Stillwater Rotary and asked for help, and I've been just amazed at how much our Rotary has embraced our elementary schools. They're functioning at Rutherford and Stonebridge today. They do all the dirty work, and I know that their impact there is absolutely huge. If you talk to the media specialist at those sites, they will, they will tell you what a difference it's made having them involved in our program. So I don't want to get into the details of the program. I'm going to leave that to David Waldschmidt and introduce him, and he will introduce the rest of the Rotarians.
Well, thank you. I want to, first of all, say it's been, I want to show my appreciation for the work that's been, that I've been able to partner with in the, with the school administration, and in particular, John Perry. John's been a partner through this whole process, and it's been great. Without him, I think we'd be on square one still. I also want to thank the board for recognizing us tonight. It's always good to be appreciated. And I want to make a special thank you to the teachers and the administration at the two schools that we work with, particularly our media center specialist Natasha Thordger and Brigida Nielsen, and our instructional coaches Erin Danielson and Wendy Schmaltz have been very instrumental in the work we've been doing. Just a couple of words about what we've been doing. We started this, as John said, a year ago, and the initial phase was just getting in there and shelving books. I look at this and said, we were really, what we were trying to do was use our time to buy back teacher time. This had the effect of allowing teachers to, the media center teachers, to work with the kids, as John said, in a little, a few more hours a day, look, be a little more student-oriented in what they're doing. We have since then collaborated with the media center teachers and expanded the role. We're now repairing books, doing exciting things like looking for lost books. This is an elementary school library. You can imagine the things we find. And it's in also getting involved in cataloging books, helping students check books in, check books out. So the role is expanding. We phased two of this. We started off this year with the instructional coaches and are now taking part of our time when we're there, working individually with kindergarten and first grade students, assisting them with their reading skills. So the teachers and the instructional coaches identify students who we can spend 10, 15 minutes, that's about the attention span, and work with their ABCs and their sight word recognition, read books with them. And a thank you to the school district for giving us some training in dialogic reading, which I have now used with my grandchildren. So the last phase of this is where we're at right now, which is to try to expand the volunteer pool. I think we'd like to reach that sweet spot where we have just right, just the right number of volunteers at the schools, and John and I are noodling that, how to do that, I think to go a little bit beyond Rotary, but Rotary will still be a partner and will be the core volunteer group for, for this project. So with that, I'd like to just turn it over and allow my, two of the volunteers have come tonight, along with the president of our club, and I'd just like to have them make a few comments.
Wonderful.
Hi, I'm Mary Parchetta, and I was a head varsity coach at Stillwater High School for 25 years, and after I retired, I wanted to stay involved with the students, especially the ones at Stillwater. I continued my relationship with the students. Rotary gave me this opportunity through our STRIVE program, which I mentor, I'm a mentor with them. And then I've also partnered with the ALC in their canoe building project over there at the high school, which has just been a big plus for them. Now, this Rotary project, reading to the little ones and doing books at the library is another gratifying and, and well worthwhile project, I think. I enjoy it very much.
Mary, before you go on, aren't you an engineer by training?
Yeah.
You're so humble.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Better move. Hello, I am Linda Halbert, and I'm a volunteer at Stonebridge Elementary School. My career path leading to here was that I was a seventh and eighth grade English teacher in Redwood Falls, Minnesota. And also, after teaching, I went into nonprofits and was an administrator in several area nonprofits, including that I was the executive director of the Partnership Plan nonprofits, including that I was the executive director of the partnership plan for Stillwater Area Schools.
Correct.
And now I'm retired, and so I'm very happy to be involved through our Rotary Club with the program at Stonebridge. And I think with my writing career, I was also a reporter and editor for a daily newspaper in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. And being, with that and being a former English teacher, I'm very much into words. And so I'm, I'm especially interested and happy to be able to work with kindergarteners and first graders with teaching them, or joining their teachers and helping them learn the alphabet and in words to help them start reading. And I, I can only say that it is so rewarding, when we're done with our session, to have the big smiles on their faces. I just know that it's making a big difference. And so I thank you so much for endorsing the project and for Rotary, for Dave, for helping organize it. It's making a huge difference. We hear that from the administrators at Stonebridge. A huge difference for the students and for the volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob Gray. I'm president of the Stillwater Sunrise Rotary Club. Rotary, for your information, has six areas of focus, two of which are to support education and to provide clean water and sanitation throughout the world. In addition to the media center project, our club has collaborated with the school district on a number, a number of other projects. For instance, STRIVE mentoring program, youth exchange, urban boat builders, the youth drop-in center, HCO for Life, and Water for South Sudan. Our members are passionate about making a difference, and we look forward to helping Rotary connect the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your service, for your inspiration, and it means an awful lot, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Going on, open forum, and I will read a statement, and after I do that, I believe we have six speakers lined up for tonight. If you wish to speak to the board, and this is procedure we read every time, so for next week's, or rather, next month's speakers, we can line those up as well. You may sign in only for yourself, not other individuals or group, only in person. Excuse me. The sign-in sheet is made available 30 minutes prior and up to the start of the meeting. Due to time limitations, we have limited the number of speakers to 15, not an issue tonight, and each speaker will be receiving three minutes. If you spoke at the last meeting, please consider allowing others to sign in before you. After you address the board, please leave the podium. Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement, so we believe fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceeding immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward the comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, we have some aspiring aspirations for speakers, and that is, we would hope that they would present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, characteristic attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns that are presented. So again, just a reminder, there is this three-minute limitation. I'm going to try to stick to that tonight. And so our first speaker is Karen Lateral. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Patacik, Superintendent Pantrelli, members of the board. My name is Karen Lateral, and I live on Cottage Grove Drive in Woodbury. I'm here tonight to read a letter that was sent to me and to the school board yesterday from Rachel Stile, who is an English teacher, newspaper advisor, and master journalism educator. My name is Rachel Stile, and I'm an English teacher at SAHS, and I have served as a member of the Language Arts Curriculum Review Committee for the past year. I'm reaching out to you to share some reflections and thoughts I have in advance of this week's board meeting. I have served on every single curriculum review committee since I was hired in 1999, and this process was by far the most structured, well-researched, and systematic that I have experienced during my time in this district. Our districts, or, excuse me, our directors led us through a universal design process that began with describing our current reality, articulating our 28-plus desired results, and exploring a variety of at least eight current best-practiced research texts related to our field. Using the philosophy of literacy instruction as our guiding document, our group discussed a variety of instructional models and techniques, as well as ways to increase student engagement, achievement, and choice. During this time, our team of secondary teachers engaged in deep discussion about our traditions, what practices we hold dear, and new ideas we wanted to explore further. At the high school level, a few key ideas continued to surface during our conversations. How do we more closely align our curriculum without losing valued autonomy? How do we create highly engaging experiences for our students, including contemporary, multimodal forms of communication? And how do we provide a high-quality, comprehensive language arts experience that reflects and promotes student achievement? After a lot of discussions, site visits, and spending time articulating our program understandings, priority standards, teaching points, and learning targets, our group recommended two main instructional practices: a reading workshop model and a common textbook. Over the course of second semester last year, four high school teachers piloted the reading workshop model in 10th grade, inspired by the resource 180 Days. In my classroom, the response from students was overwhelmingly positive. Students read for enjoyment. They read a higher volume of novels than they had read before. They felt a higher degree of engagement in the reading and critical analysis skills, and they were exposed to different forms of communication tools such as podcasts, videos, and interactive digital projects. Further, students had increased opportunities for process writing, collaborating, writing conferences, and revision strategies. One student even commented that she looked forward to the first 15 minutes of English every day because reading was her, quote, "mindfulness exercise," unquote, and gave her a sense of calm in the middle of each day. Another student remarked that his creative writing improved because usually in English, he only had the opportunity to write papers about books. This was the first time he could write about something he was interested in. The workshop model allows for grade-level alignment and the use of common summative assessments. While the majority of our group felt strongly that a workshop model at the high school was our best option based on the research we read, the sites we visited, and the feedback from students, our challenge was finding other high schools implementing this model. The workshop model preserves teacher autonomy and creates highly engaging experiences for our students, while the textbook ensures we have a common core-aligned curriculum that promotes a high level of student achievement while exposing students to rich excerpts and diverse novel sections. I don't have time to finish it, but that was the gist of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our second speaker is Jim Franklin.
Hello, Jim Franklin, Lake Elmo, Minnesota. Chair Patacik, after looking over the memorandum on tonight's agenda, I must ask you why in this time of trying to move forward and heal the district as recommended by the facts of the Morris Letherman Report that the board commissioned, why would you heap this work on an already taxed administration? Your strategy of bogging them down with busy work at every whim is keeping them from what is most of us in the district desire, and that is time spent on student, and student growth and education programs. Giving a deadline for one month is almost laughable for the amount of work you are requesting. Even though we have scored the highest score possible during the last three audits, annual audits, you are requesting admin to go back and self-audit instead of addressing real and pressing issues. Why are you so willing to waste an asset like our superintendent, which the students and faculty overwhelmingly support? Just because she made a fiscally responsible recommendation, a recommendation to sustain the financial viability, population growth, and educational quality within the district over three years ago? You're doing this because you have a personal desire to hurt a handful of individuals to get even. Basically, I asked three simple questions at the board meeting in June. The questions being, what are you, the individual directors, doing to move us forward for the students? And still, other than Director Pearson, thank you, and Pelletier, thank you, there have been no written answers to the questions given to me by your board majority, Stivlin, Weiss, Pro, Patacik, and Riley. That was four months ago. You are asking from your admin a response time that you are not even close to complying with for your constituents. I repeatedly asked in open forum for you to inform the public where the promised board costs are for this year. $5,000 is what you committed to. No answer yet after seven months. I have also asked that you account for the school board dollar amounts spent for legal fees and accounting for the distribution of info obtained for all board members. This is still not being done, as clearly evident by open meeting and committee discussions. You are doing this because you have lost your commitment to the community as a whole and the schools and the children. You're doing this because you have a personal desire to hurt a handful of individuals to get even instead of addressing real and pressing issues. The board has created an overcrowding crisis in Brookview because it refused to finance expansion this past January. Brookview would have eight more classrooms and room for 200 more students in September 2020 if this board had put education first. This board has failed our students, parents, and taxpayers. This board is responsible for a redrawing of attendance boundaries that now must be done. Despite the overwhelming financial and population evidence and the fact that the school is designed and expected to be added on to, you dispute the evidence because it does not fit your agenda. You are doing this because you have a personal desire to hurt a handful of individuals to get even instead of addressing real and pressing issues. Prove me wrong and work together, please.
And our third speaker is Tim Kellen. Did I pronounce that right, Tim?
Kellen, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Rhymes with Kellen.
Welcome.
My name is Tim Kellen. I am going to speak about the secondary literacy curriculum as well. I have taught for 32 years, the last 26 years here in this district, serving as special education teacher and reading intervention teacher, co-teaching in a couple English classrooms as well. So my perspective on this is maybe a little different because my background is not so much general education as it is special education, looking at the needs of some of those students. The curriculum, I think, allows choice for students. It allows them to pick genres they're interested in reading about. It allows them to read authors, several books from the same author if they want, because they can. They don't all have to read the same book at the same time at the same pace. If you're a voracious reader, you can read unabated. Boy, I wish I would have had that when I was in school, to pick the book I want to read and just read it and get credit for it at school. If you need to read at a slower pace, you're allowed to do that as well. Differentiation is embedded within the curriculum. So both ends of the continuum for students are being met. All students can be successful with this curriculum, at least in my opinion. The many lessons at the beginning of the lesson, at the beginning of each day, flow seamlessly into independent work, where teachers are then able to work with students individually if needed, check in with them, see how they're reading, see how well they're understanding. The strategies that are presented at the beginning of lesson works for any book that the students is, that they are reading. Again, students get to choose the book. The buy-in is there because they get to choose what they want to read. I think for a general ed curriculum, this is pretty impressive, and I've been around for a while. It fits a lot of the markers. It works with comprehension. It works for vocabulary development. It certainly works for student choice. To me, some of the most impressive things that I've seen so far this year, students are saying, "I like reading more. I'm finding time to read at home. I'm looking forward to reading." And these are students who may not have necessarily thought that before, but the curriculum, and of course, the fabulous teachers that I work with have done a lot to make that happen. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And our fourth speaker is Greta Larson. Welcome.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Greta Larson. I have two kids, and my daughter is in sixth grade at Oakland, and my son is in second grade at Afton Lakeland. And I just wanted to present an issue that I see in our schools, a basic, very basic need that isn't being addressed for our kiddos anymore. So basically, that is typing or keyboarding and being able to actually not look at your fingers when you're typing a paper or any type of test. So this issue had come up because, do you want me to adjust this? I feel like, maybe I'll scoot down a little. This issue came up. Don't take my three minutes.
We hope it will. Thank you.
This issue came up because my, I had picked up my daughter and her friend from school one day, and I asked them how their history test went. And they said, "It went really well because the first few, you know, problems were true or false." And then they said, "The rest of it got really hard." And I was like, "Oh, well, what made that so difficult?" And they said, "Well, we had to write an essay and actually, like, write sentences." And I was very confused. And they said, I said, "Well, why would that be difficult?" And they said, "Because they had to type, and they didn't know how to type." So they were taking a test, a history test, and being required to answer via essay and have never actually been taught how to move their fingers on the keyboard. And so imagine, like, the thoughts, like, when you're typing a paper, imagine not being able to think about what you want to say, and now you're trying to find the letters that you don't even know where they are on the keyboard. So that is basically what I'm asking for Stillwater to change. I started questioning this in fifth grade, and her fifth grade teacher said that he did notice that this was a problem also. And he suggested this program called Typing Club, which is through Clever, but the kids are only given the option to do it, and nobody chooses to do it. They all choose to do other things during their free time. So, and keyboarding, to me, is not a natural skill. It's not something that you just naturally know how to do, even though our kiddos are on computers and technology all the time. It's just not something that is a natural skill. You don't just know where home row is, and, I mean, I don't know when this ended up stopping to do the actual formal keyboarding lesson, but it needs to be required as part of our education. So I'm sorry, I'm very nervous, but, so if we just expect our kids to take any type of tests on a computer or obviously, like, write all the papers, it, they need to learn to know how to do this. So, and that was my favorite class back in the day. I love, I love that, learning how fast I could type and figuring all that out. So I just really hope that you ensure these kids have a plan and are able to learn how to, how to type. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is DeeDee Armstrong.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm DeeDee Armstrong, and I live in Afton. Okay, so you guys on item 10 under reports, you have a first reading for policy 520 student surveys, and I just have a couple of feedbacky things about that. The first is that under the notice section on that, for C, it says, "The school district must give parents the opportunity to review the survey and opt their students out of participating." I would prefer to have that say that parents should review it and opt their student in, mainly because one of the surveys that is sent out on a national level, and it's done electronically, is the National Youth Risk Survey, which is sent to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders everywhere, and it's electronic, which they say in the policy... And it's electronic, which they say in the policy, it says in the policy, oh, it can't be tracked and can't be personally identifiable. Anybody who's a whiz at IT figures out where the data crumbs are and they can make it so that it's identifiable. So sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, that's 11, 11, 12, and 13-year-olds. In the National Youth Survey, it's, one of the questions is, how old were you when you had oral sex for the first time? How old were you when you had sex for the first time? How many different people have you had sex with? Have you ever used cocaine or crack or freebase? Have you ever used heroin? Do you ever feel sad and hopeless almost every day? These are questions that parents should have the opportunity to say, yes, I want my child to be allowed to answer, rather than parents not knowing and need to opt their children out. So this should be an opt-in rather than an opt-out. The second thing is that you guys had a first reading of policy for student searches. The first reading was on 822, and I have some issues with that one. I work with jails and student search, the student search policy that we have here, jails have more restrictive search policies than this one. And so that concerns me because it says here that one of the things that we can search for is contraband, and contraband can be overdue books. And then, so that's a reasonable thing to do a search for. It says that whenever feasible, a search of a person shall be conducted in private by a school official of the same sex. Most jails now, it's nationally recognized that you need to offer them, if they're transgendered, who do they identify with, who do they want to be searched by? If people aren't trained in how to do personal searches, you're really opening yourself up to a whole ton of liability because people in jails are trained how to do searches so that they don't get sued. And this doesn't say anything about who's being trained to do these searches. So that would be concerning to me. And then it says, a strip search is a search involving removal of the clothing and whatever, and strip searches should be conducted only in circumstances involving imminent danger. Boy, I got a problem with this being for all students that we're gonna, that we even have a thing that we would allow a strip search. You should have the police do the strip searches. You should not have your staff be doing strip searches. And then under C for procedures on that one, it says that if we search the lockers or whatever, that we'll notify the students after we search the lockers. But it doesn't say anything that if the person, the student is searched, that we would notify the parents. That's not in there at all. So those are my concerns with those policies. And while we're on the policy thing, I, we spend so much time, so much doggone time talking about policies and stuff. Seventy percent of the inmate population is functionally illiterate. So if we spent more of our time focusing on the literacy from kindergarten on up, you guys could put me out of a job and I'd be really happy with it, but let's work on the literacy.
Thank you. And our last speaker, Diane Palasek, please. Welcome.
Good evening, Senate Superintendent Pontrelli, Chairman Patatrick, and Directors. My name is Diane Palasek and I live in Stillwater Township. I have two things first before I get into my main. And one is that I'm going to ask you to support our teachers who have requested writing curriculum. We talk so much and see so many surveys that our teachers are our biggest asset. They're our strongest force. We gotta listen to them. They're asking for a writing curriculum. And secondly, I have a question, and I know you can't answer here, but I'm wondering at some point if it could be answered. I wonder if you would provide the community what the district legal council fees are as of today compared to past administrations? And I don't know how you post that, but that was the question, if you guys would answer I want to thank you next. Our community members know you are being our watchdogs and protecting our interests. When I spoke at an August board meeting, last August, I made a statement that we've conceded to the fact that some school board members want to dismiss our superintendent. When I looked at the trajectory of that mission, this is what I remembered. Accusations were made. We supported social media that was potentially professionally and personally damaging. Campaign promises were made. Then we offered a superintendent buyout to leave the position. We put a letter in the superintendent's file, just guessing that was probably negative. From conversations that I've had with some board members, I can only guess that it might have been about not having enough public outreach or partnership, because that's what I heard. I totally disagree with that by the outpouring of support that has been shown from in district, from families, and our community, and also our community institutions that work with our school district. From different committees and different means, I've worked with Family Means, Youth Service Bureau, Lakeview Hospital, the Stillwater City of Commerce, and Community Thread, and they've had nothing but supportive things to say about our superintendent and the work that we have done together. Then I look at the audit trajectory. We already had a polarization within our communities. So what do we do? Some board members but suggest wrongdoing. So distrust in our administration, throw in negative social media, go share on public television, and put an audit memorandum on the agenda two days before the board meeting. So I have to ask, have we asked the auditor, and some of us have, are these issues that have been brought up in our audit the same issues that other districts have? And they've said yes. And are these audit issues not uncommon for other districts? No, they are just as common as they were for ours. Did our district respond with corrective action for the things, the four things that were mentioned? Yes, we did. So, I know, we know our purse strings will be tight and we're grateful that you are watchdogs, but right now, what we really want to see is the board working together with our administration on moving us forward. We are over the audit. We're done with that. Thank you.
Moving on, we are on the consent agenda. Could I get a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Well, Dee, I think is the one you want? Yep, Dee, the disbursements. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on any of the consent agendas? Seeing none, we will vote then on A, D, C, E, and F if I get a motion.
So moved?
So moved by Sarah, second.
I'll second.
Shelley, second. So again, we are voting on the minutes of the October 24 business meeting, the minutes of the negotiation closed meeting, the minutes of October 24, 2019, attorney-client closed meeting, human resources personnel report, and financial distribution procedural changes. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your right hand, please.
Aye.
And I believe those pass unanimously. And Jen, we are on D.
Okay, thank you, Chair. In page 11 of the disbursements, actually, hopefully this will address a little bit the two speakers tonight, but this has been something that's been discussed here and there for all year. So I had a little time and thought I would inquire about it a little bit and get some more information so I can provide some information to the public. On page 10, it's primarily 11 of the disbursement report, we have some figures from Kennedy and Graven, our legal counsel. We've had many forum comments and questions to this effect this year, so I thought I'd quickly pull this for a little clarity from staff for the purpose of providing this for the public. On page 11, fourth row down, you'll see an amount of, and Bob, if, Bob is going to kind of help me muddle through this, given that Kristin has gone tonight, an amount of $3,412.50. And Bob, I just want, if you could provide confirmation that that $3,412.50 was for legal, board legal services performed in the month of August of 2019.
Yes, I believe that's accurate.
Okay. All right, thank you. I also asked Director Holheisel for a comparison of board-related legal expenses between the two years of 2018 and 2019. I have not gone further back. Calendar year 2018 had a board legal expense total of $69,2789. So $6,927.89. Of that, just shy of $69,28, $22,27 of it was from November and was listed as services dealing with a complaint. Well, calendar year of 2018 was at a total, like I said, of $69,2789. Calendar year 2019 is currently at $21,569.50. The first invoice paid in this calendar year is for services performed in January of 2019, meaning the pass board did not create the legal expenses that were paid in the 2019 calendar year. Kristin then mentioned that, and Bob, just please clarify this and then I'll be done. Kristin mentioned that she would anticipate seeing a bill for services in September prior to calendar year end. So in summation, to answer the public questions about this, the grand total for 2018 was Okay, and then in, sorry. And as of January through August of 2019, so this goes January through August, we are at just shy of $22,000, not counting September, October, November, or December. And Bob, is, am I, am I there? Just wanted to do my best to try to provide a little clarity on that.
That's correct. When you go through the disbursements, there's only one change, and that would be for a purchase agreement for the bus facility, which is described in this fiscal year but is actually from last fiscal year. So just for totals, if I understand it correctly, we'd be at roughly $6,500 for fiscal 18 and currently at just under $22,000 for fiscal 19.
January through August, the end of August?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Jen, one other quick question. I think you quoted for 2018, it was $69,028.
Yeah, and that's what?
Six thousand.
$6,928, right. And then this year is the $22,000.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, thank you. I'm ready to make a motion to pass that item.
Could I have a second, please? Is seconded by Liz. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your right hand, please.
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. Going on to reports, and we are on the community design team. And normally, that report is made by Director Burns, who's not with us tonight. And I'm scrambling because he gave me a copy that I'm going to read for you if I can find it. And, and I will do that. So just to get, bear with me for a minute, please. Here it is. Director Burns unfortunately could not be here tonight. And when he told me that, I asked him to write up his observations, which he has delivered us, to us at subsequent board meetings. So I'm going to read his words as he gave them to me. As most of you know, Sarah and I are also members of that committee, but I'm going to strict or stay to his observations. Number one, and our most recent meeting was November 4. We began the meeting by sharing observation of the district's school properties from the building tours. Some example observations include, the media centers are ripe for repurposing, Lake Elmo is in need of replacement or significant upgrade, there's a variation in the use and embracement of open classroom concepts, some tier-three special education spaces are in need of upgrades, the transition program is in need of more appropriate spaces, and last, there are inequities in the furnishings across the district, parentheses, some quote flexible, some not. We then reviewed a gap analysis reported, report referred to as a Salsa report by Cunningham. The report indicates by color the level of compliance or deficiency with respect to a variety of building standards as determined by building principles. The standards consider only the quality of building spaces and not the quantity of building spaces. The report is available on our website. And I, I think, Chris, I can answer your questions. Generally, if it's green, it's pretty good. If it's orange or red, it's not so good. But again, this is determined by the building principles. Three, we ended the session with an exercise called Designing the District, in which groups of four to five were tasked with discussing options for new building construction, building expansions and renovations, and locations for specialized program. The groups positioned blocks representing buildings and programs on a district map and then shared their ideas with the rest of the community design team. Many ideas were shared, and, and these were some of the shared thoughts. And I would say too, I think you have to keep in mind, this is not a final report, and we were given approximately 30 minutes to do this. New built, and these are listed, so I will read those as he wrote them. New building for Lake Elmo, find a good use for Oak Park, expand Brookview, move the ALC program out of the high school, find a suitable space for the transitions program, create an ECFC space in the southern part of the district, sell withrow building, provide upgrades to all buildings. And the Cunningham group is working to address questions that have been raised by the community design team members and the community since our last meeting. It is certainly our goal as board to help bring a comfort level with this process to the team members and the broader community. Although the final conclusions reached by the team may not appease everyone, it's important that our community can support those conclusions. We therefore want to ensure that this process is as thorough and transparent as possible. And for those of you who are not aware, the next meeting is November 19, and that's at Oak Park, and 5:30? Five, okay. And generally, they go from about 5 to 9. So anybody in the audience at home, if you're interested, that's when they take place. So that concludes Director Burns's report, and we'll go on to school calendar. And Dr. Bob McDowell will talk about the school calendar.
All right. Thank you, Chair. School Board Superintendent, in your packet, we put three full-size copies of the options in your, for tonight, so it's easier to see the three calendars when we get to that part of the calendar presentation. So we are to that time of year where we are ready to present and then at our next meeting, hopefully approve a calendar for the 2021 school year. And so as we get started, there we go. As we get started, I just, as I've done in the past, just want to remind people that the calendar development process includes putting a committee together that has parents, a student, teachers, building administrators, district staff, community education is involved. And we do go through a process. This year, we met three times. We take time to review all the calendar requirements. We look at and analyze any input-type information from people. We go through a process of developing several drafts, and then we try to come to consensus on at least a couple different types of calendars. So what we've changed this year a little bit is the amount of inputs that we've taken. You'll see the list is pretty long. We have two different surveys that we used. We had the group go out and, like our empathy work in design thinking, have personal conversations with people and find out what people thought. We look at the contract, we look at contract day requirements. This includes as well our E-12 programming for athletics, for academics, our assessment calendar, activity needs, community education needs. We look at the Minnesota State High School League's schedules, our area district calendars from other school districts. We have to look at how we balance both our quarters and our semesters. The 2020 election will be a big piece of the calendar coming up. We have to look at the timing of secondary registration. That impacts our staffing timelines, and that gets impacted by when we end our first semester and start our second semester. We then have to take a look at We then have to take a look at what the assa- what the assessment calendar is, and when the dates for all of our assessments in the spring particularly happen. And then, uh, spring break is always something that comes up and has to be discussed, particularly when spring break falls as it relates to the end of third quarter, because one of the things that we have found is, uh, something people aren't real, uh, happy about is when we have spring break happen, and then there's three or four days that you come back, and all of a sudden, it's the end of the third quarter going into the fourth. So just a little perspective then on the surveys. In 2018, we did a full calendar survey, so the members of the board that were on, uh, the school board at the time will remember me presenting, uh, this information. This was a full calendar survey, everything about when, when do people like when the calendar starts, ends, what do they like about the calendar, things of that nature. We had over 2,000 respondents to that survey. And, uh, the big question then, as the big question now, is, well, how do people feel about starting before Labor Day or after Labor Day? And so you can see up there that, from a parent's perspective, about 34% in 2018 to 54% before and after, and then 13% had no preference. Staff, uh, was about the opposite, uh, so it flip-flopped, where about 58% of the staff, uh, liked the before the, before Labor Day option. If you go to 2019, what we did this year, we did not repeat a full calendar survey, but we did put questions in the survey to our, um, to our families when Carissa and her team put the survey out about ready, set, go conferencing and back to school. So, uh, from the respondents we got there, um, I believe we had 160 to 200 respondents to that survey, if I remember correctly, um, of each. Um, that would be both ready, set, go, and then also the secondary survey for middle school. And you can see there that parents are still in the 30s, uh, for percent before Labor Day, and then 44 after. The thing that has changed is the amount of people that have no preference. Um, and then our staff now has jumped to 74% to 16%. So as a committee, what we try and do is use some guiding considerations, not, not really much different than what we talked about at our work session with regard, uh, to that information, but what, what can we put around as parameters based on the information that we have? We know that if people have the choice, uh, they're more interested in ending as close to Memorial Day as possible. People from our surveys said, "Try to provide two full weeks off at winter break. Avoid two-day weeks if you can. Uh, don't have students have school on Good Friday, President's Day, Martin Luther King Day, and a try, and try to align spring breaks with neighboring districts." One of the needs coming out of the high school is to keep the Wednesday before MEA as a school day because we have PSAT testing that goes on. And then there's, like I showed in the previous slide, there's a desire of staff overwhelmingly to have a start before Labor Day, and then adhere to the contract and student contract requirements. Just a reminder, we have to, we have 172 student contact days, 192 staff contact days. So, that gets us to the calendars. And what I tried to do with the slides that you've seen is, on the right-hand side, for each option, tried to explain what's actually happening inside of the calendar, because in my experience, that, that's what, where the questions come, and so what's the difference between these three calendar options? So, calendar option A, it's a before Labor Day start, and if you look at August, it starts the same week as this calendar for this year did. However, it looks goofy because Labor Day is a week later next year than it was this year. And so when you look at it by the calendar days, you might say, "Oh, wow, we're starting two weeks before Labor Day in this calendar." And so I just want to point out that while it looks like that, it's actually, we're actually would be starting school the same week in August that we did this calendar year.
Correct. It's just starting the same date because Labor Day is so late.
Labor Day is so late. Yep, it, that's why it looks the way that it does. So then, um, the second bullet, Oc- October 14th is in session, so from the previous slide, keeping that in session, so we were able to do that. We did take November 3rd off, so Election Day is off, and as well, and we did that as well as the Monday previous. So we're not gonna, we wouldn't go to school for a day and then have Tuesday off and then come back. We would, in this calendar, we would schedule two professional development days back-to-back. We would not have kids in session for the 2020 election. So then, the next thing, um, is, does, the ca- this calendar does not interrupt registration and ta- and staffing guidelines. And so as a reminder, this would jump us all the way into that January timeframe. And why this becomes important is, students start registering for classes for the next year right when we come back from winter break. And so, we are really looking at, when does the semester end? And on this calendar, semester ends, it's the yellow, uh, number there, this, uh, January 15th. So that keeps us right in line with registration, which then keeps us right in line with being able to start our staffing right around Valentine's Day, which is where we want to be in order to get our postings out, when we need to get our postings out. So that, we can check that off the list. The last day in this calendar, because of the way the shift is, the last day would actually be the Friday before Memorial Day. And then that would allow us to have graduation on June 5th. And the other thing I would point out with this calendar is what ends up happening is because of where second semester starts, um, our semesters are exactly balanced in days. So that's calendar A. If I move to calendar B, and I know I'm going through bullet points line by line, but I'm hoping it'll help you see what the differences are between them, so, because otherwise, it's hard. So, in this calendar, we still start for Labor Day, but we start that next week in August. So, we start the last full week in August, so we have one week before Labor Day. October 14th in session, so we can cross that one off. Same thing happens November 3rd for 2020 election. No kids are in school. However, what we needed to do to make the days work is, you'll see that quarter one ends on the 30th of October, and so what we did is, we made the 2nd of November that next Monday be the grading day, because we have to have a grading day after the end of a quarter. And then the 3rd becomes a professional development day. So we were able to figure that out like we were in the last calendar, so no change there. In this calendar, we have four days less for winter break. I forgot to point that out in the last one. In calendar A, I should go back. In calendar A, what you'll notice about winter break is that, uh, winter break is actually So I'll bring this back. This calendar option B does create a two-day week in there. And then, um, this calendar, because of where we were able to put, or keep, uh, the end of first semester, it does not, uh, interrupt staffing like I explained before. Just like the last calendar, I don't think I pointed this out, but spring, spring break is the last week in March, and that allows us to avoid all of the Minnesota State High School League, uh, tournaments. It also allows us to avoid, from what we understand, all of the local club tournaments that happen. And then it allows us to utilize, uh, Good Friday as part of spring break, so that we can gain that day back in the requirements for days. This calendar also, also allows us to have graduation held, um, on June 5th. The only difference really now is, is the later start in August, and our semesters become unbalanced a bit between first semester and second semester. And what I'll point out here, since I've gone through these two, is that what I mean by the 2nd to the last bullet in that, that June 5th can happen earlier and later. Uh, we schedule out, and Wilkins Auditorium holds our spot for the first and/or second week in June to do graduation. The difference is, on the 5th for next year, there is no one else slated for Wilkins Auditorium, which means we could choose when we hold graduation during the day. If we go to the 12th, which you'll see in the next calendar, we are paired up with Centennial, which is how we have usually been paired up. Centennial has the more, or the early slot, we have the late slot. So graduate, for those who haven't gone through graduation, the late slot is that 6, 7 o'clock at night slot, like we normally have. If you go on the 5th, you have the option to be in the earlier slot and not the later slot. Not that that matters, just giving you all the information.
Thank you.
So then we get to option C. This is the after Labor Day start. So you'll notice that we don't start school until September 8th. We still maintain October 4th being in session. We still take the 3rd of November off. That will still remain as a professional development day. What we've had to do because of where first quarter ends, if you remember in the last calendar, we were able to use a grading day on that Monday, November 2nd, because we can't do that anymore because we're a week and a half later in our start. First quarter actually doesn't get done until the 12th of November, which means we have to use one of our conference give-back times for that Monday. So, moving forward on the bullet items on the right, uh, we have four days less for winter break than the two weeks in this one. This one also creates a two-day week. Uh, this one will interrupt our registration and staffing timelines. So if you look forward to January, you'll see that first semester actually can't end until the 28th of January. There is really no way we're gonna be able to turn around student registration and then therefore staffing by Valentine's Day in order to get our postings out where we normally get our postings out. That's just, that's impossible to do that in that two-week period of time. Uh, we'd be lucky to get, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, but in this model, we'd be lucky to get staffing started until March 1st. Spring break stays the same. We avoid, we keep it the last week of March. Um, the other issue with this calendar that we see based on what I shared in the previous slides is that it does create four days being left after the end of third quarter. So if you look where spring break falls, you'll see that we have to come back to school April 5th, 6th, and 7th before the end of third quarter. Um, and then, this will take us all the way out, uh, the last day of school will be June 11th, and this is why I shared the thing with Wilkins Auditorium. We still have a hold on the 12th, so it isn't that we couldn't have graduation on the 12th, you'd just be locked in to the later time, you wouldn't have the option. Um, and I double-checked that with Wilkins, and so we're, we're held on both of those. Again, it isn't a deposit or negative, it just, that's what it is. This one does have semesters being balanced. So, with that, um, my experience has told me to try and be as thorough with the explanations of the options as possible. Um, I'd open it up to questions and try to do my best to answer them.
And before we go to questions, I do want to, uh, recognize, uh, Bob, on this, this is one of the most difficult and challenging tasks that can be assigned to an administrator.
Everyone loves the calendar.
To, to try to please all the various audiences. It really is a challenge. So, thank you and your committee for your work on that, and I'm sure our questions are gonna be very friendly questions, so we'll turn it...
We'll do our best.
Thank you. For snow days, are there any worked in?
Um, so, snow day, same as always. So we, 172, we need to be at 100 and, um... 169 is where we, I believe, where we get down to the, uh, 1,020 hours for the high school. So, um, it, it should be exactly the same as this year. If you remember, the reason we did flex days at 2 is because 2 days keeps, keeps us safe by one day worth of hours, that third day, which that would get us down to 169.
Okay. And then, can I ask a second? Second, unrelated, is it possible that we could survey? I'm concerned about the two weeks before Labor Day. I get that it's the same day, but I'm a little afraid of the backlash there could be, that if that's an option, that we could survey people.
In other words, you're going between A and B, or just that item from there? Because that, that's one of the big differences.
I would say just that item would be...
Just the item from there. I suppose we could work on, maybe we're thinking we send out a one-question calendar survey?
But that was our first question. Bob, was there a preference by the committee?
Um, so, the committee's preference was this, um, they did not like how C ended up laying out, just by the way the days did. They didn't like, so I'll start there. They didn't like that it took us all the way to June 11th was the, was the biggest issue. Um, the, uh, parents on the committee, uh, as well as the staff, really liked starting before Labor Day. They really liked the fact, when they started looking at the way that the days laid out, what they liked about option A was that there was a full two weeks for winter break, because that's what parents said, "If, man, if you can do two weeks, great." They, I think, had the same questions about what will it look like to start on the 24th of August when Labor Day seems so far away, but they got over that. And so, what they said was, their recommendation is really option A or B before Labor Day start. They said they could, they, they would go with either one. I asked them afterwards, I said, "So if I, if you got pushed on it, where would you go with?" And most of them said A, but I think it really came down to, I think if you had them up here, they would say, "Our recommendation is between A and B."
Okay.
Before Labor Day.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about the statute before Labor Day starts? Like how many, um, how many years now have we done this before Labor Day, and why the, why, why?
The exception.
Yeah.
Yep. So a school district, if a school district has a minimum of $400,000 in capital projects, they can request a, uh, waiver to start prior to Labor Day. And this would be our, I think this year was our third year starting before Labor Day?
Okay. Other questions, Melissa?
Um, since we, this year, we had, what, five days for MEA? Is that right?
Uh, yeah, we had Thursday, Friday, and then Monday, Tuesday, so with the weekend, yeah, four, four plus the weekend.
So did those two days get spread out in a particular spot?
Yeah, they had to, um, what ends up happening is you start navigating days between your, uh, professional development days and those purple days, the give-back days. And what drove that was really trying to get the 3rd of November off in every calendar, and then balancing quarters. So, everybody felt like the most important thing, first of all, was to figure out how to get November 3rd to not be a school day. And then the second thing became, if we're taking the 3rd off, we need to make sure we can also take the 2nd off, because nobody wanted to come to school for a day, have a day off, and then come to school a day for again, or come to school a day again. Once you stole those two days from somewhere else in the calendar, now you're jockeying for those quarters and semesters to end, and so you chew up those two days that were the extra two days after MEA.
Thank you.
Puak or any questions, Melissa?
Um, I guess, I just wanted to say, um, when it comes to the start and end times of the year, um, I feel like I speak for a majority of students when I say that we're more, um, we're more excited for school to start early, whereas when the year, um, when it gets close to summertime and the year's kind of dragging out, ending early as always, um, I think a lot better, and just, I think students like that a lot more, because if I'm being honest, I check out kind of of school the last few weeks, and so the earlier, um, when we're sitting in the building and it's summertime and other schools are out, um, I think it's a lot harder for students to concentrate and focus when all they want to do is be outside.
Um, just to add on, I do think that the longer winter break for option A is like, um, students are gonna enjoy that too. I think that, in my opinion, option A is probably gonna be better, like, students are gonna like option A better, for sure, because of the early end in June, and also the longer break in December.
Thank you. Jen?
Love the student voice. Thank you for that feedback. Um, I just had a really easy one. On the 15th and option B, 15th of, nope, sorry, October, the 19th of October over MEA. So basically, that 19th is considered conference planning day.
Correct.
Um, so that's a...
So for elementary schools, that's half-day conference planning hap- typically what they do is they run conferences from 11:30 to 7:30 on that day, and then it's a normal workday conference planning for secondary staff, is how that has happened in the past.
And then the same thing is for the 15th of February?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Do you have enough information, or do you want more? Sarah? Sarah?
Yeah, I'm just going to be honest, I'm a fan of after Labor Day. I think a lot of parents are, because a lot of families do a lot of things at the end of the summer, you know, family reunion time, and of course, State Fair. So I'm a fan of after Labor Day, but we only have one option. And the fact that Labor Day next year is so late, I think that's a little too late. And I think oftentimes, schools are, the governor has, in the past, when Labor Day is this late, they have given a waiver to all districts. Do you know if that's something we might be...
No, we haven't heard anything about that for this upcoming year. I haven't. Have you heard anything?
Would you think that it's likely that we won't have a problem with starting before Labor Day?
We won't have a problem with starting before Labor Day.
What would you say you had to do to get the waiver?
The $400,000, yeah. We will have $400,000 in projects.
Just from long-term facilities maintenance and stuff?
Yeah, we typically, according to Kristin, we have $400,000 in any given year of projects that are coming through over the summer.
So essentially then, lots of districts might have...
Yep.
$400,000.
I would make the suggestion that districts our size could probably opt for that waiver most years.
Okay.
Shelley?
But to that, isn't the reason for the waiver to give more time to get projects done on either side by stretching out one summer over another, isn't that the reason they do it?
I'm sure that's probably why they put it in a statute.
Who knows? It is what it is.
So I would just remind, if we don't have any more questions, I would just remind the board that next, we don't have a week on, week off, so it's on the schedule, it's on the agenda for next Thursday already to vote on this. So if you're really thinking you want us to put us a quick survey out there to whomever, we'd have to get on that really quick, because tomorrow's already Friday.
Well, I'm the only one who said it, so I don't know if, I just feel like they care or they already know.
And it wouldn't be in your packet for next week.
Well, let's raise this question. How many board members have enough information right now to make a decision next meeting?
I guess I feel like if we did a survey, we're, no one choice, none of these three choices is going to be 100%. Some of them might not even be 50, you know, I think people are going to have lots of different opinions, so I don't know that it would necessarily help us. And it sounds like it would be a lot of work for Chris, you know?
Be rushed.
That's fine.
I like the idea of doing a survey, but I wish we had more time.
Predicting a snow day.
Yeah, what I would do though, so, you know, we went round and round a couple years ago about when can we do a full survey? I do, I do think that because next year at this time, it'll be a full two years since we got a full read on the community, I do think we should do a full calendar survey again, going into this, prior to putting the next calendar together, because it's been so, it's been far enough removed from the last one.
That's a great idea. In the meantime, they can still email the board and let them know. I don't know if you want to put something out in the newsletter?
I will have it in the newsletter this weekend, so you can really...
Thanks.
Thank you.
I would leave you just a reminder with calendar C that, that, ending that semester that late in January really does mess up staffing. It will have an impact on our ability to get postings out in the timeline that we have in the past.
You mean so that we can get staff?
Yep.
That's, we're hoping to get...
It's going to put us three weeks, three weeks behind. That was the biggest aha moment when we started putting these down, was wait a minute.
Pushes your calendar.
Yeah.
Could you explain a little bit more about that?
Yeah.
Is there some kind of restriction on when you can do?
Nope. No, what happens is, what we know is that, so we work backwards, right? The sooner we can get postings out, the sooner we get first dibs on the most people that are out looking for jobs.
Okay.
So what that means is, you have to have your postings ready sooner. You can't get your postings ready at the secondary level until you know what your registrations have come in as, knowing what your numbers are going to be and all of that. So when we do register, we have, registration goes out, like I said, right after winter, or right after the end of the quarter or the semester, so that then starts your timeline for when you get those postings out. And so right now, we're in a perfect timeline where Valentine's Day seems to be the perfect spot where I have secondary principals give Kathy and I their first run at what they think they're going to need for sections. That seems to give us just enough time for Kathy to be able to get postings together and us to decide on initial numbers.
Kathy, would you like to add to that?
I was just going to share, it might be helpful for you to have a little understanding of what the posting process looks like, because it seems like, well, why can't you just put the posting up and be done? With the teacher contract, we have a spring posting process, and we do this with paras later. We put out our, we actually start in January and try to start recruiting for immersion, and then we start for special ed, and then we do our general positions. But the process is such that you put up the postings, it's up for three days, the principals have three or four days to make decisions, interview people and make decisions, then we have to prepare a second posting that goes up for three days. You have the process again, it has to be within 10 days of the first one. So it's about 15 days to get through the posting process. So that's why it seems like, what's the problem? But when you start late and you take that long, it kind of delays us getting out to the market.
And the bottom line is, you want the best candidates, and particularly those who are early birds.
Yeah.
Trying to avoid the fights with other districts.
Yeah, because candidates like to have a contract, and the earlier the better. So, any other questions? Well, if not, let's move on, and it looks like we have about four policies to talk about.
Okay. Thank you. First one we're going to look at is policy number 534. It is the unpaid meal charges. It is replacing our SR 1.27. We brought this policy for a first reading, and then because we had some concerns about some of the language, we pulled it and gave it a little bit more work. And so it is now behind the original group that was, and now it's here for a second reading. I have to give my gravest apologies, because I missed some changes in this policy from the time that it got approved and to the time it got into the packet. I just, I don't know how I missed it. But so I, I'm going to take you through some significant changes that we've made to this policy since it was here for the first reading. So if you could pull it up and take a look, for the second reading, we would like for you to consider that item under, under number, Roman numeral three, which is low or negative account balances notification. It then, it says one, you know, it says, I'll just kind of go through, let's see, wait, where are we? It says that families, you know, the school district will make reasonable efforts to notify families of a low account balance when their count is at five, at or below $5 by one or more of the following methods. And what I'm told is, parents choose which one they want, or if they want all of them. School messenger, personal or automated phone call, are you guys following along? Three, an email or a text message. If you go down to the bottom of that section where it says E, let's see, wait, where am I?
E's the language that you changed, right?
Reserves the right to?
I am getting three different versions confused. So directly following that line, there should be a B, and the B in this version would become C. And what the B is, is actually mistakenly put in section 2B, where it says payment of meals. And it's in green letters. It says, "B reminders for payment of outstanding student meal balances will not demean or stigmatize any student participating in the school lunch program." Do you guys see that? So 2B under payment of meals, that B should not be there. It should be 3B. So that statement would directly follow the statement that I just read. It just got put in the wrong section.
Just a question of order.
Right. So do you follow that?
Yes.
Everybody with me? Okay. It's a really important message. I think it's something we did discuss, and we, it had been actually a little bit later in the policy, and we felt it was an important statement, and that's why we moved it up to B in that section three. Additionally, and I'm going to look and make sure I'm following here. It says, if you look at, going back to section three, item E, what it reads now is, "When an account balance reaches negative $50, the district reserves the right to prohibit participation by the student and siblings in any future fee-based programs such as, but not limited to, field trips, sports, and senior activities until such time as the balance is paid in full." This actually is the paragraph that we had some concerns about and that we had community members raising some questions about, and we felt it was important that we get that right. After quite a bit of discussion, we've actually changed the language in there to make it more accurate to what's actually being done and to make it more clear what the consequences would be if a person refuses to pay, even if they have a negative balance of $50. So I'm going to just tell you what that should read that we agreed upon in our policy, in the policy working group. It should read, "When an account balance reaches negative 50, the district reserves the right to prohibit, to prohibit the student from participation in fee-based programs until such time as the balance is paid in full." Sorry.
So it's different in, right here, if this looks different, verbiage?
On E, it's 3E, it is what I read before. It says, "And siblings in any future fee-based programs, but not limited to," and it lists all this stuff out. What we're saying is, "When an account balance reaches negative 50, the district reserves the right to prohibit participation by the student in fee-based programs until such time as the balance is paid in full." So in other words, it's not going to involve necessarily siblings, we're not listing out all of the different possible things you might be precluded from. And primarily, this is because in practice, that isn't really being done. I mean, it isn't something, it's very, very rare that this would actually, you know, come into play. And what we discussed about is pretty much, it's mostly a graduation issue. If you, if you're graduating and you're going to be leaving the district, then you need to make sure your account balances are full before you leave the district. And that's when it starts to come into play, we want to make sure that we get those done. That's the only time when it really starts to be like something we use to enforce. It's really rare that we even need to use this. But we need to leave it in there, because it is having an impact on making sure that people understand how important it is that they pay their bills.
Did, thank you, did, and I appreciate the work that you put into this. Did the, I know that we, you had discussed with building leaders as well, and so they were in favor of this adaptation?
Yep, sorry, our principals were in favor of leaving this clause in the policy, because in case we need to use it to encourage, to strongly encourage people to pay their bill, it does seem to be effective when we need it.
Okay, thank you.
Did you guys need me to read it again at all? And again, this is just the second reading, so it will come back for a third reading at our next, at our meeting next week.
And... So it will come out in the packet tomorrow?
I had reviewed it, and it was right before, and Shari and I, we couldn't figure out what happened. When it got into the final revised packet, something, some glitch had happened, and it had reverted back to an older format that we had already decided not to go with. So we're computers, yeah. Anybody have any questions about this? Okay. So we will get it corrected, we will get this accurately portrayed in the next, in the next packet, which will be going out tomorrow.
It comes out tomorrow.
For the 21st, for its final action.
Thank you.
Okay, and if anybody has any concerns or questions about this, please, please don't hesitate to contact us.
And you're on the committee, and Liz is on the committee, and Mark burns.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Moving right along?
Yeah.
We are...
So that is the unpaid meal charges. The next one is a first reading of a policy that we've just taken a look at. It's going to be really easy. It's policy 401, the equal opportunity employment, which replaces our policy SR 1.10 and R 1.3.1. This is just aligning our current policy with, more in line with what the MSBA language is, and it's using their numbering system as we've been going through. And it's pretty short, so if anybody has any questions or concerns about this, now is your time.
Seeing none?
Okay. And again, this is first reading, so this will come back to us next week for a second reading.
And so we're on E, first reading, policy 402?
Yep.
Disability, non-discrimination?
Right. 402 is disability, non-discrimination, it's replacing our R 1.3.1 and our SR 1.9. We did a little bit of language, just sort of refresh, refreshing, and took out things that we didn't need, and it's pretty straightforward as well. Anybody have any questions?
Again, seeing none. Policy 520, student surveys, policy work group?
Okay. So student surveys, this is pretty much in line with the, with the MSBA, well, actually with this one, we had a policy, let's see, wait. Did we have a policy? This was the one that we're doing now for the, I don't see another policy. Okay. So this, some of the language in this policy was sort of combined in other policies, not specifically lined out in one. This is a mandatory policy, so we're basically starting with the MSBA version, and there's a lot of crossing out in this one, and I think just to kind of put yourselves at ease a little bit, what we just were trying to do is set, there's a federal standard, there's state standard, there's local standards. We found that there was a lot of redundancy in the language, and so we wanted to just really clean it up and make it shorter, and make sure that we were in compliance with all three levels of policy for a statute. This one's a little more complex. We did have an open forum speaker earlier tonight raising some concerns. I guess I would, I would recommend, if there are concerns in the community or throughout the district, an email is really helpful, because then we can go through and look at that. Certainly, if we feel the need, we can pull this for further consideration. Right now, it is pretty close to statute, so I'm not sure how much wiggle room we have to be able to change some things, but we certainly can take a look and give that some consideration. Anybody have any thoughts?
Shelley has a thought.
Yeah, well, I would just say if you could do that, and maybe, maybe there are certain surveys that are more, there's more content that just those should be opt-ins, and the rest are okay, maybe if you could give consideration to that.
Can you explain that better?
Well, the open forum speaker spoke to one particular survey.
Choosing to opt-in.
Right. So maybe we don't need to do that for every survey, but maybe there are certain surveys that we would want that to be an opt-in instead of an opt-out.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm on board with that too. I think, I feel like this year was one of the first years we've really gotten a notice on some of these surveys. I don't know that I've really received that in the past. I know, I don't know if students really are aware, and when you get into the high school, that if they are required or not required, I'll get little emails during the day saying, do I have to do this or don't I? So I don't know if that's something we can discuss as well.
Jen?
I just want to thank the speaker for giving us something that we can look at and work with, honestly, and I hope, I hope to, you know, not to put you on the spot, but perhaps see an email just so we can kind of digest your comments and just make sure that we addressed it, and, you know, I would really hope that we can just do that. I can feel, I can sleep at night a little bit more if we can just look at that, if that's okay.
And just so you know, I did take notes, but I don't want to miss anything. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anything else you want to add? Is there anything else you wanna add?
I think that's it.
Okay, then we're gonna go on to G, which is the District Phone Service or System Upgrade. Mr. John Perry. Welcome back.
Good evening. More exciting technology stuff.
Always.
Get right to the point here, so hopefully we can, we can move on. We have a phone system in place manufactured by NEC that was implemented in April of 2010. It's been in service for the last nine years and has been declared end-of-life by its manufacturer, NEC, at the end of this school year. Once a phone system is beyond end-of-life like that, we, we really can't get replacement hardware or parts for it and we run the risk of being without phones for an extended duration, which isn't really something we can opt into as a school district. When replacing a phone system, you have to consider, do you have an upgrade path or are you looking at pulling out the whole phone system and putting in a new one? And we're fortunate that NEC has an upgrade path that we can take advantage of. That means we get to keep all of our handsets that are in the classrooms and offices. There is an upgrade license fee that we have to pay, but generally that's much, much less than what you'd have to pay to buy new licenses for each of your phones. And a lot of the core hardware that we use in our phone system, we'll be able to keep and recycle. The, there is, there are many components that have to be replaced or E911 gateways need to be replaced to be compatible with the, with the upgrade. And so there's, there's some work involved. We contacted NEC to get all of their Minnesota-based vendors for this. There were three vendors that they listed for us, which was Matrix Communications, Black Box Network Services, and Loffler Companies. And we went out to those companies to get quotes for the upgrade. Matrix Communications came in at the lowest at $113,000. We did not receive a quote from Black Box. We reached out to them a couple times and I just, I think sometimes they know if there's too many people competing that they're not gonna get the business. Included in the 113 is the license maintenance for the first five years of the product with NEC, but not the support that we contract from a local vendor, in this case, Matrix. So I put in the form that I included to the board that there's a $50,000 per year fee that kind of goes into the routine maintenance of the system. So the first five years, the NEC portion is already covered in this 113, so it would only be about $25,000 a year that we would pay to Matrix to maintain our existing system. After year five, we now have to pay our licensing fees to NEC as well as our support to Matrix and it'll go up to somewhere in that neighborhood of $50,000.
But is that new? I mean, aren't we paying somebody now?
We pay that.
So that's not new, a new $50,000 a year?
No, no. We, we pay that on the 8500 system we have now.
Thank you.
Whenever, for me anyway, when, when we see these large dollar items, I like to get as much rolled into the three-to-five-year package as possible, so it's taken care of and it's out of the budget and it's not something we have to scrounge for.
Okay. Other questions, comments?
I just wanna say thank you for being so thorough with this. I really appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Nice job on the forum.
Like that one.
So the next board meeting, I think that we'll have a consent agenda item for this and I'll bring forward the quotes and all of that for the board to see.
And that'll be one week.
Time flies.
Thank you, Jen.
Moving on, we are on action items and we have a very significant and a big one here called Secondary Literacy Curriculum. Rachel and Karen, help us out, please.
Good evening. Board Chair Patachek, Superintendent Pontrelli, members of the board. We are here tonight to ask for formal approval for the Secondary Curriculum Review Committee process. We presented information to you about this process and about our recommendation at the October 10th board meeting. Before we seek and ask for formal approval, we'd like to just give a quick update and review of where we've been and what we've asked for and then also address a couple of questions that have come in the last couple of days so that you have that information. So just a reminder to you that we do follow Policy R 1.2 with curriculum regarding the framework and the procedures that we go through and we review curriculum. And you can see the framework that we follow, study and evaluate and evaluate and recommendation are year one and two, and so we are in year two, which is where we bring the recommendation and formal approval to you. We've talked about it at the October 10th meeting about the curriculum review process and the thorough process that we go through to make sure that we vet research, that we spend time looking at where we're at in a district and then really studying certain components of writing curriculum and the understanding by design framework. Huge kudos and thank you to all the members of the Secondary District ELA Committee. Just a reminder that everybody in the department was welcome to join this process, but these are the staff who signed up because this is a lot of extra work and time and effort. Many days spent out of the classroom, nights and days in the summer. And so a huge thank you to all the people who spent time and brought their expertise and skillset diving in to bring this recommendation to us tonight. So just a reminder that the middle school recommendation is to continue with the E5 model that was supported a year ago with Units of Study for Teaching, Reading, and Writing. And that has components of Readers and Writers Workshop and then also Word Study, which is part of structured literacy. The high school recommendation is to use a workshop instructional model as well, offer student choice and engagement, but also bring forward a textbook for structural components as part of the recommendation. And just a reminder that our effort, when we go through a curriculum review, we only do this once every 10 years. So this is a very thorough process, that there is a lot of intentionality behind. And when we do this, we make sure that we are aligning the system, E12, so that our students have the very best experiences possible. So you can see how this recommendation tonight fits and complements the E12 literacy framework throughout our district. One of the questions that we've received in the last couple of days has been about, have we seen results? And maybe we have declining MCA scores as a result of the implementation. And I wanted to provide some information that that is a misconception. Usually the research says, Michael Fulon and others have said that there's about a three-year implementation dip that they've found when you implement a new curriculum because it's like being a new teacher again. But I just wanted to share some quick scores so you can see it. Oftentimes, people look at scores comparing different grade levels of students to each other. And when we do that, we're not looking at cohort scores. We're looking and comparing students who have no relationship to each other and the learning level at which they're at. And so we have provided different information to you on data before, but if you look at this graph, this shows the variety of years from 2014 to 2018, 19 of how our third-grade students perform, how our fourth-grade students perform, how our fifth and our sixth. And one thing you'll notice in this trend data is that it's pretty consistent for us going back quite a few years, that we tend to see third and fourth grade drop and then we gain in fifth grade and then drop sixth, seventh, start to gain back up eighth grade. But wanted to point this out to you because the gap that we have, we're also seeing different students in front of us. You've probably heard and read throughout the nation in the state and local community that the gap in the needs of students that are coming before us every day are widening. And so really breaking down that barrier and that achievement gap is something that we're focusing on, but it is, is widening with different populations as we move ahead. So you can just see the proficiency rates and the fairly consistent performance over time. This chart, since the question was deliberately asked about MCA as it related to the reading curriculum that we implemented last year for the first year in our elementary, that was year one, and keep in mind that we did not get to implement writing, so that's without the writing support implementation. But if you look at our MCA reading proficiency, and this is all students tested, you can follow the cohort. And so we're following the same group of students, which is where the value comes in. It doesn't tell us a lot to compare third to fourth graders to fifth graders if they're not the same cohort of students. So if you look at the chart, in 2017, 18, our third-grade proficiency rate was 63.4. After one year of implementation, our dip was only .2. That's pretty significant. Usually you tend to expect and see a greater dip than that, so we were pleased with that. We want scores to be higher, however, but that is a very small dip. But if you look at our fourth-grade students who were 64.5% proficient in 2017, 18, they saw a significant increase of almost 12 points in the MCA, and that's after one year of implementation. You may be wondering why we have 2018, 2019 highlighted, and that's because that was the year of the first implementation. You may also be wondering why we did not follow more grade-level cohorts. The reason for that is I just wanted to address the question as it relates to our implementation and the concern that we maybe shouldn't support this proposal because it follows a Units of Study Workshop model and we saw significant decrease in our MCA from the implementation and delivery model. And I just wanted to factually point this out.
Yeah. And, and thank you for doing that because I just wanna make sure everybody gets this.
Yep.
But really, the yellow in the yellow, third grade and fourth grade, that's the same cohort.
Yep.
And fourth and fifth, the red or orange, depending on your visual quality, is the same thing. That's, that's the same cohort of kids.
Yes.
And, and to be honest with you, this is a question I had. It was something.
Great question.
I thought the assessment workshop that we had last week was the best I've ever had since I've been on the board. I mean, I thought it was exceptional. And that was one of the questions I left with, okay, how come? Because what stuck out a lot is that 58.7. And, and that scares people of, well, golly, what's happening? And again, this is a partial answer to that, so thank you.
Yeah, and that number is something that we are looking at and I have to say that it's not that surprising to us, knowing the gap in the needs of students that have been with us since kindergarten as we approached the third-grade year. So we also wanted to show something that we've talked to you about. The MCA, the new analysis that we've talked to you about with ESSA and the World's Best Workforce, shows growth data, but this is also the FastBridge data that we use for screening and to determine growth for our kids. And so we wanted to show you those patterns. And so if you look at the first chart, this is winter-to-winter cohort comparisons. So again, we're not comparing different students to each other as they progress through different grade levels. We're comparing cohort of students. And so if you look winter-to-winter screening, so it's one full calendar year of growth that we're looking at, you can follow, and as Director Patachek pointed out, the yellow is one cohort of students that have followed from the 15, 16 year all the way down to the 18, 19. And then the blue is the second grade, 16, 17, down to 18, 19. And so you can see some very strong positive patterns with that as you look at our FastBridge indicators that let us know how many students are performing around grade level or above. So then you can do the math by figuring out how many students are below grade level and in need of intervention. And so we're really happy with those results there. Then if you look at the bottom category, this is the same comparison, but it's spring to spring. So we use different times of the data depending upon what we're looking at for intervention placement for growth on an annual basis. And so this is spring to spring and so you can see the trend patterns there. We do see a decrease when you look at third grade from 17, 18 to 18, 19. And so that's something that we're paying attention to and looking at instruction and adjusting, but you can see that the other areas show positive patterns of growth for that screener, giving us strong data on our literacy skills in the classroom. Yes? What?
Levels district-wide.
Yes, thank you. Yep, that is district-wide. And again, as Director Patachek said, we do have all this data. We shared that with you last week at the learning session. We can dive deeper with you with all grade levels, but again, this is just to focus on the implementation questions we've had on our model. So some of the other questions that we've had have been around how we support students with dyslexia. And we sincerely welcome these questions and we realize that it has been since March 29th, 2018, since we had the chance to talk to you about what we've been doing to support students. We had a learning session with the school board to talk about this. And one of the resources that parents who advocate for dyslexia use a lot is the IDA, the International Dyslexia Association, and it's something that we look at too. And you often hear the statistics that up to 15% to 20% of the population as a whole may have symptoms of dyslexia. When we talk about it in school, we have very few kids who have been screened by a neuropsychologist or a psychologist trained in learning disabilities and talents. And so we have to look at, they may have attributes of, or they may have a diagnosis of dyslexia. So one thing that we want to point out is that there's this misunderstanding that we're not doing any structured literacy and we'll take you through that. But just as an example, the checkmarks illustrate, oh, that, woo, yeah, that one flew in, most fancy. But there are five components of reading that the IDA supports, which is supported by everybody that follows reading patterns. And we check all of those and we'll show you some charts in a little bit of how we are meeting structured literacy components in our delivery model and that would continue up through middle school and up through the high school. So just a quick snapshot, and it's a lot of information, but things that we've previously implemented that support students with dyslexia or who have attributes of are these following programs that you see and teams. One thing that we're really excited about is when we had met with parents who are advocates, they had asked, "Are you training staff in Orton-Gillingham?" And our responses, "We would love to train every teacher of literacy in Orton-Gillingham." Minimally, that's $1,000 just for the PD, not including subs. So we couldn't afford that. So what we did is we started with our interventionist teachers. And in 2017, 2018, we started training all of the interventionist teachers in Orton-Gillingham. And so we're excited about that. That's a, a strong level of support that's endorsed by the IDA. Then this year, what we're planning is sessions for professional development for teachers. We had talked with these parents that we wanted to offer that, but it takes a couple of years of the cycle to put that into the budget. And so we're offering that for teachers in January and April. And then we're also looking at purchasing Wilson foundations for Tier 3 support. And this supports the instruction along with the interventionists who do Tier 3 instruction so that they also have Wilson foundations as a support for their training with Orton-Gillingham.
Before you, before you go on, because I know board members, you, I, others have received information from some of their advocates, do they know about what's proposed for 2019, 20?
They do not, although it was discussed and we said at the learning session that we're looking into it, we just didn't have the money to do that. We didn't have the money slated in the budget for the professional development nor the purchase of Wilson, so we've had to build that in.
Yeah. And I personally, depending on what happens tonight, et cetera. I think that would be helpful to let them know that's what you would like to do.
Yeah, absolutely. So this details the professional development that we plan to offer regarding dyslexia. We've reached out to various people in districts and I won't go through that in detail, but you can see that it does include PK through 12th grade of teachers so that we'll have a comprehensive approach to the PD that we offer.
Which stands for professional development.
Oh, thank you.
Could you go back to that one? I'm sorry, Rachel. So the letters training is what, it says opt-in. What is that? Are we gonna participate in that or?
Yes, we are going to participate in that and we're hoping to get our interventionists involved in that for sure, but classroom teachers will have the choice. May I move forward directly?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So something else is that we have curriculum that supports dyslexia specifically and we have that at all tiers of our multi-tiered systems of support. And so all students receive letter land and words their way along with units of study and reading and writing, and these are structured literacy components and delivery models. And we have not determined that for middle school yet, but we will. And then in Tier 2, they receive press strategies that are very explicit and targeted. And then Tier 3 is when they receive the Orton-Gillingham with level literacy intervention and soon that will also be Wilson. And then in our special education program, Sande is supported with Alinda Mood Bell visualizing and verbalizing, and you've maybe read that with dyslexia research. Something that we'd also like to highlight is, when you think about the foundational skill development, everything that's highlighted here are pieces of structured literacy. And on the column in the right, those are specific structured literacy components and then on the left are the programs that we use that support and deliver that. And just as a reminder, again, every student receives this except for the Orton-Gillingham, which is reserved for Tier 3 intervention.
Sure.
Can I just say, isn't PRESS like another way of saying MTSS? Isn't that just like a brand of MTSS?
PRESS is Pathways Through Reading Excellence, and it's with the University of Minnesota. And it's very targeted, specific, progress-monitored skill by the classroom teacher for kids in the classroom who may need extra skill development. So they use a variety of resources to meet that. They may revisit Words Their Way, they may revisit Letterland, they may be working with reading levels. It will depend on what the needs of the students are. But it is a system of support, a response, in the multi-tiered systems of support.
Okay, so in it, so as a tier, it would be a Tier 2?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Generally, we say anything that's in the classroom is Tier 1 and Tier 2 when it's delivered by the classroom teacher. When a student is leaving the room for a pull-out specialized service, that's a Tier 3. So then here also is more skill development. And on the right, you see other components of structured literacy that are specifically linked to the programs of study that we have selected and implemented at the elementary level. So just something to reference to, we often hear different terms with structured literacy, and it gets confusing. Structured literacy has been a term that the IDA has really generated, but they will say that it's really about multisensory, explicit instruction, and in phonics, which is our Words Their Way in Letterland, and then the Orton-Gillingham strategies. Shifting gears a little bit, there's been some questions about, are we teaching grammar? Are we teaching vocabulary? Are we addressing spelling? And just a reminder that we teach to the standards, and we can share the K-12 standards with you. But you can see here that all the components that we want our students to experience in a comprehensive model are addressed in the standards. And so they may be in the various programs we've talked about and resources that teachers use. But these are the standards in the green column that our ELA teachers use and teach, which include the grammar and vocabulary components. We didn't provide all of it to you, but we can do so. We have extensive research. As one speaker said earlier tonight, teachers spent a lot of time diving into instructional practices and research behind it. And so we have a collection of all the resources and research that our department looks at when making recommendations and diving into best practices with high-yield strategies, and then also with the committee.
And on the very bottom, I see ones highlighted there in yellow.
Yes. So what we wanted to reinforce, thank you, was that included in this has been with our department looking at strategies and research behind supporting students with dyslexia. And so that's just one alphabetically at the list that we look at to support structured literacy.
And if you were to look at the full reference sheet, you'll see also that there are resources related to a variety of different learning situations, like gifted and talented English language learners and so on. So we tried to look at the whole picture.
So with just addressing some of those questions, before we discuss further, open it up to questions or possibly hear from teachers, just a reminder about the recommendation and the proposal before you tonight. So if our budget was fully intact and we did not have any cuts, we'd be looking at the top white portion. We'd be bringing the entire package to you. But as I illustrated at the October 10th meeting, we can only bring forward what we could budget for. And when we budget, we budget three years out, and we have to keep in mind all departments and curriculum levels in our budget. And so with all of that in mind and looking at the next three years, these are the priorities that we selected to bring before you. And so the total for the curriculum approval tonight is 135,000. The professional development is 25,820. And one thing that I would just like to remind us of is that this opportunity comes around once every 10, 11, 12 years. And so when we think about the investment or the cost per student, and we look at the number of students we have in 6 through 12, you can see that the proposal before you tonight is an investment of over $39 per student. And over 10 years, that's a $3.90 investment as you spread that out. So we're very fortunate that we're able to put this amount of money into the proposal before you tonight.
Shelley?
Before you go on from this page, because I asked this question, I think it would be good for others to hear. My question was, is it better to just continue what we're doing if we can only do part? Can the integrity of the curriculum be implemented if we're only doing part?
Yes. Thank you for asking that question. Yes, we can maintain the integrity, absolutely. And I think the biggest concern with that question would be if we would delay this, the impact that that would have on our current priorities and then actually the next three years out. Because right now, we're focusing on English Language Arts and Elementary Literacy as a district. We've budgeted that and planned for that over the past two and a half years. We have science curriculum review we're starting in January. That will take a year of recommendation, and then we'll be looking in a year out to bring that proposal to you. That these proposals for curriculum investments are usually around a million total when you start looking at kindergarten through 12th grade. And then right after science, we dig into math. And if you've heard from MDE, science, we have to have implementation in so that we are up to date and the students have had the experience to meet the MCA 4 with the new science standards that have been approved and need to be implemented by then so that students can take that assessment and be measured on that. So we are on a tight timeline. So a postponement of this would then transfer to next year's budget. And another reminder is that you've already approved the fiscal year 20 budget, which includes the total package for curriculum and professional development that we work with. So this has already been in the budget. You're just seeing the specifics of how we're asking for your approval to spend it because it's over $50,000 now. So with that, there are many teachers who are excited and who are here tonight, and I'd like to thank them. But at the October 10th meeting, it was suggested that you'd like to hear from teachers. So if you would, they would love to come up and just share their experiences with you, and then we can answer questions or I wouldn't put them on the spot. I would answer the questions or Miss Lateral.
They were ready and willing.
Come on up. So I'll have them introduce, would you like that first? A full introduction of some of the committee members?
Please do.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Amy Cook. I teach 6th grade Language Arts at Oakland.
I'm Cory Quick, and I teach high school English at the high school.
Jen Walls, 8th grade at Stillwater Middle.
Tracy Cox, 8th grade English, Stillwater Middle.
I'm Jessie Fredrickson. I teach 8th grade English at Oakland Middle.
I'm Megan Sinks. I'm a special ed teacher, and I co-teach in 6th grade.
Laura Hammond at the high school.
Thanks for being here.
We do include representatives of different departments on the committee as well. So she has been a very strong advocate for special education needs. So would anyone like to share any thoughts, or?
Yeah, I'm happy to. It's a pleasure to talk to you. I've been teaching in the district since the turn of the century. It's a long time.
That's only 19 years ago.
I think you were in my class. I think I was your teacher. I'm not sure, but it's nice to see some of my students are up there tonight.
I was very flattered. I'm a little older than that.
You were an impeccable student, as I remember. I've been a part of this curriculum review process. Like I said, it comes around every 10 years, and I think I was a part of the last time. And I'm pretty excited about the direction that we're going. I've seen a lot of changes in our district, and I'm working with teachers. I'm serving now as a department chair for the English department. And the change sometimes for the teachers has been, it's always a little scary to change some things. But I've really been excited by some of the materials that we've been bringing to students by the level of engagement. I've been piloting this year, and I think Ms. Hammond does as well. We've been piloting some of this work that we were looking at as a committee, and we wanted to see how this works in the classroom. And I find that the richness of the material and the level of student choice that I've been able to bring to students has really kind of invigorated them. And I want to just, again, ask sincerely for, you know, your approval for this. I'd also be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, I'm sort of enmeshed right now in the delivery of this sort of curriculum and working with students. So if someone would like to ask me a question?
Why don't we do this? Why don't we go through some testimonials? And I'm sure that's going to raise some questions, and so we'll come back to that. But please.
Absolutely, then I yield my time.
You were very, you were very patient to be here as long as you are. So please do. We want you to be heard.
Grammar is very important in my instruction. I teach juniors and sophomores. There are 40 questions on the English portion of the ACT, and I work with grammar all year. And I am really excited about the grammar in the HMH texts that we selected and proposed. I'm also really excited about the multicultural, the ethnicities and the diversity that is in the choice in the HMH texts. I have had students read a short story by an Israeli man, a memoir by an Indian woman, a science essay by Neil deGrasse Tyson already this year my sophomores have read, and I really like that. Like I said, the diversity is really important in my classroom, and I like that. There are timely texts. So I'm really excited. Like Cory Quick said, I've been piloting this year, and I have a lot of excitement about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I mentioned before, I teach 6th graders at Oakland. And so if you remember the information that Rachel had shown you, that kind of peachy, orangey, red, whatever color cohort, that's the cohort that I am currently teaching. And one thing that I was very excited about at the beginning of the school year that I emailed both Rachel and Karen is, my students love to read. And it's different from previous years. When they don't get reading time in my class, it's like almost they want to start like, you know, a coup or something to take over. They're like, we need to read. Do we get to read today? And they're very excited. And one of the many things that I am enjoying with this experience is, I can have students who are very high-level readers and students who are struggling a little bit with their reading, I can teach them all the same skill, but they apply it to the text that's at their own level. So I'm not expecting someone who might be a struggling reader to read the same text as someone who's way up here. And I'm not expecting a gifted and talented student to kind of be held back a little bit by someone who's still struggling to comprehend what's a grade-level text. And so I really feel that this way of teaching and the resources that we're using are meeting students where they are and allowing them to soar. Every child is able to improve because of the access that they have to the text at their ability and the text that they want to read. There's a lot of flexibility. There's a lot of choice involved here. And I just feel like for the students, in my personal, professional opinion, it has been better than having everyone read the same text all the time. There's a time and a place, absolutely, for everyone studying a mentor text or something like that. But allowing them that choice and that flexibility to read at the level where they find the most comfort has been really helpful.
We have a question.
Yeah, can you talk a little bit more about how that works? I'm trying to imagine being a teacher at a middle school and having everyone in your class reading something different.
Absolutely.
How does that exactly work?
So right now, I'm in what's called a deep study of character unit. And so today, actually, we were talking about the pressures that characters face. And so we have what's called a mentor text. So I teach just a short story. And within that, I guide the students with my own thinking of how a character is facing this pressure. The students then take that concept and apply it to their own books. And so I might have some, a 6th grader reading Diary of a Wimpy Kid, and I might have a 6th grader reading To Kill a Mockingbird. But they can still both analyze those texts for the pressure that their character is facing. Also, then my job as the teacher is to go and conference with those students and talk to them and analyze their thought process. And another thing that we do is use interactive journals. And so that allows me to read their thought process. And so I really feel like I am understanding my students better as readers this year than I have in the past with other curriculums that I've used, so.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you. That's helpful.
Hi, so I wrote something down. I hope you don't mind if I read it to you. But like I said, my name is Tracy Cox. I teach 8th grade at Stillwater Middle School. And the majority of my educational career, which has been since 1996, has been at the middle school level. Since the beginning of the school year, I have had the opportunity to be a part of a group beta-testing the workshop model using the units of study. And I can without a doubt say that this has been one of the most rewarding teaching experiences for me. Each class starts with a mini lesson where a focused strategy or skill is modeled. Then students move into individual reading time, where students dig deep into their book, practicing the skill they learned in the mini lesson. In a writing unit, the structure is similar, but students get lots of time to write, practicing, and improving their craft. With using the workshop model and the strategies and the units of study, this year I have seen reading more in my students than I have ever had in any classroom. My books are flying off the shelves, and students are reading faster than I can get them back on the shelves. But my classroom library is not sufficient to keep up with my students' voracious reading. At the end of September, so just one month into the school year, we had a reading celebration. After just one month of school, my students had read 385 books and over 121,000 pages. And yes, we kept track. At conferences a few weeks ago, I heard from many parents who said, I don't know what you've done, but I have my reader back again. Keep doing whatever you're doing. Another parent said, my child is actually choosing to read at home. It's so exciting to see. I attribute this to the fact that we are giving students time to practice their reading skills at school. They have time to invest in books that they love, talk about them, and write about them. During my conferring sessions with students, which Amy referred to, they are saying to me, Mrs. Cox, I never really liked to read, but because we're reading in class and I have found books that really interest me, I actually want to read at home. Another student shared with me, Mrs. Cox, I know I'm going to be ready for reading at the high school because my reading stamina has increased so much already this year.
Great.
In 2016, I completed my doctorate in education and focused my dissertation on reading at the secondary level. I did extensive research on reading and the latest research surrounding it. Reading is extremely complex. There isn't, and will never be, a one-size-fits-all curriculum that will fulfill every student's need. However, what I do know, and what research tells us, is that without practice, readers don't become better readers. There is a direct correlation between the amount of time a student spends reading and their reading success, vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. We have the opportunity to help kids find or keep their love for reading and make it a part of their everyday lives. If you believe that middle school students should have access to high-interest books at their level, if you believe middle school students should have choice as readers and writers, if you believe in personalized learning, if you believe the extensive research that reading makes better readers, and if you believe that we as teachers know our students and have their best interests at heart, then you will approve the request for the resources that go with the units of study curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jen Walls, again, 8th grade at Stillwater Middle. And I, too, have been part of the beta group doing units of study. And I wanted to first address some of the concerns about teacher autonomy with this curriculum. And over the last 10 years, I've been in districts where I had complete autonomy, as in from the ground up, starting brand-new, could do whatever I wanted. And I've been in districts where I was essentially scripted to kind of do what I needed to do. And in both cases, I really felt that I was not able to be the strong, flexible, responsive teacher that I wanted to be. In a situation where I had complete autonomy, I felt like my time was spent on day-to-day lessons, just trying to keep up, making sure that I had something that felt like a strong lesson. And I didn't have time to put all those pieces together that someone who has has spent teams of people putting together, like, units of study. And when it was scripted for me, I didn't feel like I could respond to the students in front of me. I could see that there was a particular need, but there wasn't room for me to spend an extra day meeting the needs of what I could tell that those students needed. With this curriculum, I have some autonomy, absolutely. I can still include books that I'm passionate about, that there is room for that. And we are addressing those most valuable skills that the students need, and so I can respond to those teachers that are in front of me. I'm not just responding to the majority of needs with this one because it's so personal to every student. I can respond to the needs that every student in front of me need. I have never been enabled to do something like this before. Another essential piece of this, this curriculum, is the focus on skills. In the- In the past, with the English curriculum that I've been a part of, the units are really more focused on, well, what book are we teaching? And it was a whole-class novel. And in this setting, where students were, the students were much more focused on comprehension and preparing mostly prepared discussion questions, answering prepared discussion questions. Students could get by reading, not really reading the book and just kind of picking up on what was discussed in class. The students would fake-read. They would ask a student who had read the book before class, well, what happened in the book? There was little opportunity for students to transfer their reading skills to an independent text. In units of study, we teach a reading skill and show students how to use that skill in any book. This model teaches students how to read instead of just what happens in the few novels that are taught throughout a school year. As a member of the ELA Curriculum Committee, I was impressed and inspired by a group of people who were willing to ask tough questions, who were willing to consider all learners, and who were vulnerable enough to ask whether their own teaching practice was best meeting the needs of students. This committee has stretched me in ways as a teacher that I could never have anticipated. And I'm grateful that we have found units of study because finally, I feel like I am enabled to be the strong, responsive, and flexible teacher that we are all striving to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's really fun to hear all the great work and the testimonies. I think what they didn't share is the journey to get there. They have, they've alluded to it, but they dove in. And when we started the process, as we've shared with you, we looked at, what's our current reality? What are we doing really well? And what do we want to change for the service and support of our students? And so, we were completely open-minded, looking at research and instructional styles. And this is a major shift from whole novel, just textbook approach, to textbook, some whole novel, and then student choice of reading. And the workshop model is new too with the conferring pieces. So, just my greatest thanks, and you would be absolutely honored as Board of Education members to know what they've done outside their comfort zone to get where they're at. So...
Two other quick questions.
Yes.
And any of the teachers can attend attention. Tell us about the people who aren't here, the people who are in your department. The question has come up in some of our discussions with the administration, et cetera. Obviously, you have huge commitments here. And like Rachel said, and some of you have said, this has been quite a journey to get to this adoption. I know the process. I've been involved in those. But tell us a little bit about the person who's not on the committee, your other colleagues out there.
Yeah. So, you know, what was really interesting at Oakland is that half of us were on the committee and half of the other teachers were not able to be on the committee. And we kept in touch throughout last year as we were doing the committee work and even through the summer as we were meeting as grade-level cohorts to really start digging in on our own time. And we kept in touch with our colleagues. And, you know, our colleagues had the same questions that we had at first when we were learning about this approach of, how is this going to look in my classroom? Wow, this is really different. Can I do this? And as we, as they heard our enthusiasm for the program, it caught on really quickly. I don't teach at Stillwater Middle School, but I imagine their experience is the same. And that is that my colleagues at Oakland Middle School are so excited. None of us feel like we know everything yet, and we realize there is a lot to learn. But as we've all started to work with this curriculum at different levels, some of us are really fully implementing in this beta year and some are more just putting a toe in this year. I mean, honestly, whether it's in an official meeting or just standing in the hallway, everybody's really excited. And I'm hearing the same things over and over. And that is, my kids are reading a lot more. Boy, I really feel like I know my kids this year better than I have in the past. And I am just really excited about how well this works. So, I feel like that's what my colleagues would say.
Thank you. Other questions, sir? Jen, you want to go next? Go ahead.
Well, I, holy cow. I just have to start with a sincere thank you to everything you teachers do for our students. And I'm looking at a few of you. I just cannot, I sincerely can't, I can't say that with enough sincerity. Thank you. A couple of you have had my bugaboos and, oh, my gosh, I just, I just, I, my, my question, you know, twofold, the gentleman who spoke earlier, I just, I'm very moved by the curriculum because what are we here for? We are here to inspire a love of reading. That is what we're here for. And I just can't, for us to be able, for you to be able to have the tools to give a student from second grade to third grade to say, you know, and this is, I can't remember what teacher, possibly Ms. Walls, I don't know. But, you know, I just, when they're young, you know, hey, kid, if you want to read Diary of a Wimpy Kid 10 times, is it to your level? Hmm, maybe not. But are you reading it? Are you reading it over and over and over? Yes. And will you progress from there? Probably because you enjoy it. And I, you know, that as they move on, I guess my question and love and affection would lead to a concern in that how would these remarkable, passionate teachers, do they feel, or do you feel at all stress of, okay, so what, I have to master 25 different books? And I guess for me, I'm hoping you don't because I love the curriculum. But I guess if you could speak to that. And also, my second question is possibly thinking of a certain Pelletier. How do you, how do you inspire a child who has a lot of potential? But how do you get out of them what their interests are? And might this curriculum help with that? And how does that look, I guess? I don't know who could answer that, but...
One of the things that I remember reading recently, and I honestly don't remember if it came with the curriculum materials or where it came from, was that there aren't students who don't like to read. There are students who just haven't found the right book yet. And that is one of my main goals as a teacher, is to have kids find the right book. And so, when you asked about, do I feel stressed about having to read all these books? No. I tend to read a lot of middle-school-level books anyway, so I can recommend them to my students. But one way that I find out their thinking, like I mentioned before, is through the conferring. So, I can find out if they're understanding the skill I'm trying to teach without ever having read that book. Because I can ask them questions about that story, and I can process if they are understanding the story just by having them talk to me. So, I'm not feeling that pressure. And like I said before, I just, I'm really enjoying this because we're getting kids to read. And even those kids who struggle and say, "Hey, Mrs. Cox, I hate reading." I've gotten some of them hooked, you know? I found the right book for that student. And so, that, that's just a win right there, you know? Finding a book for a kid who is a reluctant reader is huge for me.
Thank you.
So much.
Sarah, you had a question?
Yeah. I'm just kind of curious, a couple of logistics. So, how many teachers are there in this, the beta, like, who's trying this out right now? How many people? I mean, across the district?
So, some of their colleagues who did not serve on the committee and did not dive into the research and the practices, they will get that when we have the budget approved to continue PD. So, that's when they'll dive in and receive the professional development. But they had the option, if you want to try some of these strategies so that grade levels are working together and pacing together, you can do that. But it hasn't been required. And so, some of the people on this committee, actually, all of them are doing some of the approaches. But some, honestly, I can think of two that, you know, were honest with us along the committee saying, you know what, I've been doing this a long time, and this feels different. I'm being stretched as a learner and a teacher, and it feels good, but I'm nervous. And so, they were slower, and they're slower yet because they want to continue professional development. But they've also then said, we're all in. We haven't seen the levels of engagement before. We know our readers better than we ever had before. The one-on-one time conferring, they would have never identified the strength of skills or the opportunities of improvement for skill without sitting down one-to-one with some of the opportunities. But some of them are just still, as we, because we haven't completed the full professional development, because they've just dove in with our own internal professional development. That, is that fair?
And then, and sorry if I could do a follow-up. What, where are the books? You know, I'm hearing a lot about choice, that there's a lot of different, you have a lot of different options. Where are those coming from? What part of the...
Well, they are trying to find and share as many libraries as they can. We've had a variety of resources. We just haven't instructed with them. We've also purchased some novels that they've had more of in the classroom so that people can have that differentiated. But with this approval, we'll be able to buy more of the leveled books so that students don't have to read another book if they so choose. It'll keep their interest up.
So, this is essentially going to extend the program that we're doing in the elementary. This is going to extend it through middle school, and then high school is going to use this textbook.
And I'd like to add that I know the teachers behind me are purchasing books out of their own pocket because they love it so much, and they want their kids to have great choices.
Shelley?
Thank you. So, with the choice, is it a choice, like, here's your choices? Or is it the sky's the limit kind of choice?
So, I think it depends kind of on the unit. There are times during the year when students kind of have a choice from the classroom library or from their own choices, kind of an independent reading book. You pick whatever you want. And during that time, we're offering a ton of suggestions. Kids are doing book tastings to try and get them in, kind of help them get to the right book. When we're doing one of the units of study, one of the actual reading units, then there's a suggested book list. And then, we're going through that book list and kind of figuring out what, from that suggested list, what are ones that we think would make sense for our students and might be offering 10 to 20 different options within that sort of suggested book list. So, the, what is it called? Teachers College? Teachers College doesn't prescribe. They don't say, these are the books you have to do for these units. They say, here are some that will really work well for this. But this is, again, where some of that autonomy comes in, and teachers can say, hey, I know this other book that's really wonderful that would fit here. Let's add that one to the list as well.
Superintendent would like to...
Sure, just one for the group. I just want to affirm and applaud your work. It just, it gives me shivers. I mean, this is, this is really what most people who go into the superintendency wish they could spend all of their time doing. But I just want to applaud you for taking the journey together. The work that you have done is just exemplary. It really is. It's so exciting. And so, thank you for all the extra hours and sweat and tears that you put into making this be a reality for our kids. It's really exciting.
One of the areas I want to touch on a little bit because I think it's important, and this is an important step for that, is I mentioned, a week ago roughly, we had a work session, and it dealt with a lot of assessments. And let's face it, some of the numbers we saw tonight are disturbing. I mean, maybe in the 70s or 80s, but you always face that question, well, what about those others? Well, one of the follow-ups that we're going to do, and Shelley's going to talk about liaisons pretty soon, and what they have put together is a proposal, and I suspect it will be passed tonight, of liaisons for each of the elementaries and then for the middle schools and for the high school for teachers. And what we hope to do very soon as a follow-up to that work session is each principal will sit down with one of those elementary principals and talk about what's the building plan, where are we going to go with this? So, I'm saying, there is a connection. And then, in two, three months, we're going to switch. We're going to have another elementary school. And hopefully, we'll be going through the same thing again. And we'll do the same thing also with a middle school principal, a high school principal. So, I say, none of this is lost. But I'm also, I was married to a language arts teacher. And I know most language arts teachers love to read. And they read, when you talk 20, 30 books, that's nothing. They might do that on a two-week vacation or something like this. But I'm still saying, the huge challenge out there are those kids that don't have that propensity or kids who don't have that. So, whatever you can do to, at the same time, instilling that love and continual love with those who have it, also, the really tough one is to make believers out of the nonbelievers. So, but I echo the, thank you. Liz has a comment.
My question kind of feeds into what Mike was just talking about. And I know that a lot of people on the board have reached out to teachers that they know within the district. And this curriculum follows basically the philosophy of the elementary curriculum, correct?
Parts of it, yes.
So, one of the teachers that reached out to me said that the less, is an elementary teacher, and said that the lessons seem very appropriate for the high readers, but they feel they're constantly searching for time in the day to reteach average to developing readers. So, how would you address that?
Yeah. That's a strong concern amongst all of our teachers at all levels. As we see differing levels of students and the gaps of how they come into our system increase, it becomes more and more challenging for teachers to reach all the continuum of levels. And so, what teachers typically do is, they can only do so much in the classroom with students. When they have 48 minutes at the middle school or they have 60 minutes at the elementary school, they have so much time to focus on the whole class, and then they break into small groups and then individual students. So, when they get into specific needs for supports, that's when they'll maybe do reinforcing skill development with Letterland, with Words Their Way, with some of the standards, with some of the other materials. But when students start to struggle and they're not making gains, and so, I can't speak for this teacher, but in that situation, that's when they'd make a recommendation and referral to the learning supports team or the student supports team, saying, we need to come together to talk about what skill is of concern here and how do we target instruction? And is that requiring enough attention that we need to have a tier-three pull-out specialized, trained, and at the elementary level, it would be an interventionist with Orton Gillingham, really focusing in for 20 minutes a day with that student extra to get the support they need?
And then, just really quick.
Go ahead.
The slide with, that talked about the letters training that MDE is recommending, did you say that is going to be up to the teachers to choose or that's going to be a district?
So, letters is a really intensive reading training program, and it takes a lot of time. It's really high-quality. But as you know, it's something we would have to ask our teachers to do outside of school. Therefore, it would need to be voluntary because they would be donating their time to participate. It's also something that MDE has supported and is asking districts to have teachers come forward to apply. And so, we did right away. When Karen received that notice, she was immediately, can we do this to allow some of our teachers in this beta group to dive into this, to then see, is it something we want to further invest in? And so, I'm sure you'll hear more about that. But we are getting support from MDE for that, to dive into that.
And Director Wise, very good. I'd also like to add that with the implementation of a new curriculum, there's always a learning curve for both the students and for the teachers. And so, the teachers are finding that their students are coming to them now better able to do the learning that is expected of them than they were last year. And that, like at Brookview, the kids who started in kindergarten and are now in first grade, they're really seeing, starting to see a difference in the students being able to participate in the thinking expected out of the curriculum. But honestly, you know, when you jump somebody right into a curriculum, the students are going to have a learning curve. So, you know, a third-grade teacher, a fourth-grade teacher, a fifth-grade teacher may be seeing that transition.
Director Riley has a question.
I got a couple of questions. One, I was kind of wondering how long they were piloting this particular group. And I wanted to know some of the concerns that teachers might have with the new curriculum. I've heard a lot of positive things, but I would like to hear some of the concerns that there might be. And the last piece is, what was preventing teachers from having engaged learners or engaged readers prior to this?
I'll take the first question and then default so they can share the struggles. I think that it's hard to find student engagement increasing when it's a whole-classroom delivery model, a one-size-fits-all. Traditionally, if you're... Traditionally, if you're just doing structured teaching, it's a lot of the teacher doing the work. And then you try to fit in skill development. With this model, students are engaged. And as one of them pointed out, or a couple of them pointed out, they don't have the choice to not read. Before, as a whole class novel, you didn't have to read the book because you didn't sit down with your teacher and talk about the skills and how you were applying the strategies. The accountability is now built in. But to talk about something that Jen Wall shared, you know, you often hear students say, I hate reading. And it's not reading they hate, it's the feeling that they feel when they're not successful at it. And this delivery model helps just reach every kid at every level rather than having a kid read a novel that may be three levels too high or four levels too low for them. And so it helps increase engagement because the students are choosing their texts too. So they're excited about what they're reading. And we all know teenagers, when we tell them to do something, we have a different reaction than when we say, what are your thoughts on this and how do we get there? So.
I think my biggest concern right now is having enough books to keep up with my kids. That's my biggest concern at this point. Because they are reading so much and so quickly that like I said, my library can't keep up with it. So that's, that's my concern at this point.
Thank you.
For me, that's an exciting concern.
Thank you.
And I would say that my, my only concern right now is that I'm feeling that the struggle that comes with growing, this is, you know, the first year that I've taught this way after teaching 24 years in a very different way. And so I'm not in that place where I feel like an expert and I'm, I'm feeling myself grow as a teacher. And that can feel a little uncomfortable, but that's like a me thing and not a kid thing. Back to your question about kids, getting kids to read in the, in a more traditional environment, what was preventing that is I think exactly what Rachel was hitting on. And that is that the kid, you know, I taught The Call of the Wild for, I don't know, last 80 years or something. So I teach The Call of the Wild and, you know, it's, it's okay for most of the books, for most of the kids, it was the right level. But if I've got a kid who's reading at a third grade level, and I do in eighth grade, and I don't care if I'm sitting down with that child and reading out loud with them and providing them with all the scaffolding and all the differentiation I can, it's akin to somebody saying to me, we're not going to have you do the brain surgery. Just take out this appendix, you know, like I would feel, oh my God, I don't want to do that. Like just really hostile about it. And that's where those kids were when we were asking them to, you know, keep up with the class that's beyond them. It was just kind of a sense of fear and failure all the time for those kids because they weren't getting exactly what they needed as much as we were trying to give it to them. The curriculum just didn't provide it. So, you know, sometimes I would give a kid a totally different book, but do they want to be reading a totally different book when everybody else in the class, you know? And this way, we can really teach the student and not the book. Does it matter if a kid reads The Call of the Wild? I mean, I think it's great, so I think they should. But does it matter in the long run? No. Does it matter if a kid experiences defeat and failure with reading? Yeah, it matters a lot. And this way, you know, the kids, we can totally meet them where they're at. We can help them grow and catch up to their peers and that's what I see.
Okay.
I want to just speak to an aha that I had earlier this year with units of study that the first unit that we did, we did this year was really about kind of building a reading culture. And one of the days was focused on students helping, helping them explore their reading identity. Who are you as a reader? Who are your favorite authors? What kind of genres do you enjoy? Are there particular challenges that come up in a book that you enjoy? And there were a few students who were those who said, who had kind of consistently, well, I don't like to read. I just, whenever I pushed, they kind of couldn't really articulate for me, you know, why they might not enjoy reading. They just kind of felt like it was a chore. And multiple students told me in conferences after kind of that day of having that reading identity, they said, well, I think I didn't like reading before because I didn't know what kind of books I liked. And in a more traditional setting where we're just reading those same novels, the likelihood of those four or five books meeting the, the reader where they are, what type of reader they are, what that reading identity is, I think is, is sort of a needle in a haystack. You have to just sort of hope that it meets that needs. And so with this, because they have that choice, we're going to, we're going to hook so many more students and build that enthusiasm in a way that I think is just so much more difficult in that more traditional setting of, of whole class novels. As far as concerns, one of my concerns is how do we continually maintain getting more, like when we, we want so many books and we need so many books, just do we have a plan? How can we make sure that we, we are refreshing books as we go through? And that's just a challenge we have to think about.
Okay, Jen.
Well, I was ready to make a motion, but I, I do have a, I do have a question. Gosh, based on Jessie and Jen, what you were saying, how do, how do you, say a student who you want to just grab them, you want to get them just reading, you know? And you help them and guide them and they're excited about a book. But back to the student who has potential and is just, you're, you know, he, I'll say he. Is just there, is, is just right there and enjoying that book. But how do you get to a point, because I, again, my stress is your stress in that, oh my gosh, you know, how do you get that student to push that student a little bit more? And, you know, how do you, can you, can you maybe speak to that? And again, my concern is, is the stress on you to do all of that. And maybe it's going to come naturally through time that you'll be able to do that a little better.
It's so much easier this year to do that because here's why. The, we can push those kids through conversations, right? I can't push a kid who's struggling and maybe had a little bit of success and how do I get him to the next level? Or how do I get them to the next level? I can do that when I have, when I literally have five minutes to sit down with the kid and just talk with them. That's all, that's all that it takes. I mean, along with a little bit of knowledge about what the right next step is for that child. But if I can sit with him and say, and I'm, I'm actually thinking about a real child that is in my class right now, because I had this conversation about a week and a half ago, where I can say, hey, you did such a great job understanding this complex situation in this book. And I know you were nervous about it and how did you like it? And the kid talks back a little bit about, yeah, you know, it wasn't as hard as I thought it was going to be. And I really understood this and I liked this. And we have this conversation and I say, what would you think about this book? And I bring them, and this is just what I do. I, I bring them two or three different choices. And I talk to the kid about the book. And I tell them, what's going to be a little bit more challenging? This isn't going to be too hard to you. I would never suggest a book that a kid isn't ready for, that I don't think he's ready for. But to just really personally guide that student to the next level because that student probably doesn't have the skill of knowing what the next level is. You know, they're just picking books by authors or covers or whatever. And so this model, I really think the most beautiful part of this model is that conferencing time, whether it's really a formal conference or a small group conference, or they're just reading and I'm bopping around the room checking in with kids. I have never had time to talk with my students and get to know them like I had this year. And that's what's going to help them grow. It's, they're not going to grow because I throw a book in front of them. It's because I told them that I think you're ready for this, you know? So that's how we do it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Liz.
Your question, your, your response actually made me think of an additional question that I was already going to ask, is what's preventing from having the conferencing with what we have before we purchase this curriculum? Well, you were just saying, go ahead, sorry.
It's not as if anything prevented it, but when we were all reading the same story, usually in that curriculum, along came a worksheet or along came something else. And so it's not as if we were prevented from that. But it just felt like we, I personally felt like I had to rush, rush, rush to get to the next story that was required for me to teach. Whereas with this curriculum, and I think Jessie said it earlier, I felt like we were so much more focused on the reading of the story, but not the skill. And so the difference between the two curriculums is that this one feels to me like I can take more time on the skill versus just getting through Call of the Wild or whatever it happened to be. So it just feels to me much more skill focused. And it's not just, oh, now we're going to do inferencing, now we're going to do visualizing. It's, I'm spending 21 lessons on character, but it's all different lessons and it's all different depths of knowledge with character. So I'm really able to go deeper into the lesson and then allow, that allows me time as well to meet with students individually. So in a way, it slows things down of what I have to get done, but I go deeper with what I'm doing, if that makes sense.
You know what it almost sounds like and I pick up as you're talking? You're also personalizing it for that person, for that kid. It's much more student centered. It would appear to me in this type of arrangement, you have more flexibility. Some kid may do 10 books, some may do two.
Absolutely. And, and that, and you hit the nail on the head there. It is differentiated naturally for students, which allows me as a teacher more time to meet with the students. I don't know if I'm clarifying that very well, but that, that's how it feels as a teacher. And I've been doing this for 21 years and I started workshop model last spring. And not only do I feel it's better for my students than the way I was teaching before, but I am a better teacher with, I feel as if I'm a better teacher. I know my students better. I know them as readers more. I know their strengths and their areas of growth, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sarah has a question. Liz has one more.
Okay. In the Reading Well by Third Grade Plan that's on our website, on page 18, it says, I hope, our hope is to continue training our tier three interventionists in this best practice and we'll continue to offer training, I was talking about the OG training, if it can be accommodated within the reduced professional development budget. Level two OG training is also needed for our interventionists. Based on school board recommendation, our view of tier two and three methodology materials will take place. The goal is to ensure we're offering enough systematic explicit phonemic awareness and phonics instruction for those who need it. Budget cuts to curriculum and professional development will have an impact on the scope and timing. So my question is, what would it take to be able to finish that in, at the elementary level?
Oh, what that would take honestly is.
Money wise specifically?
Money wise? It would take a reinstatement of the curriculum and PD budget. Because PD and curriculum go together. We can have money to buy curriculum, but we, if we don't have the PD dollars to support the teacher development to do it or to support tier two training of OG, the next level, then we struggle. And what happened is with this year's budget cuts, we had to make some really difficult choices of priorities because within both curriculum and PD, professional development, we have standard expenses every year. We're supporting every department, every course, every subject from K to 12. So there are materials that require us to replace and purchase every year. Physical education, we pay $25,000 for lifeguards for the pools for middle school. That's an annual fee. We have an annual fee for math textbooks. We have to have those in the budget. So what happens is because those are essentials, those are going to stay in the budget because if we cut them without adding something, we'd be taking away the teacher's supports and resources and opportunities for kids. So that's really where we'd like to have those dollars back because that is a priority for us.
So would it be equal to the amount that this curriculum costs or would it be more or?
It would be less. If we're talking the interventionists. So if we're talking the interventionists, it would be, oh, I don't want to give you a number that's inaccurate, but I can share those numbers with you. It's also why we wanted the letters training with MDE to get on board to, to dive into that at little cost.
So are we just too late for it? Is that?
No, we're still hoping to be a part of it. Yep. But if we would want to train all teachers in Orton Gillingham, which we would love, that would require if you take, for example, 250 classroom teachers in the elementary, and I would say minimally 1,500 per teacher. If you're sending PD, we'd have to negotiate with the union for some summer training days. You can multiply that and have that number. So we're interested in it and Karen may be pulling the numbers up.
Even as you brainstorm, isn't, it, it would seem to me there are ways to train trainers.
Yes.
In other words, if you send some people, make that investment, you can perhaps come up with a cheaper model.
And I just bring it up because to me, it makes sense to put our money to finish the one we started first before we put more money in the next system. That's just my own personal opinion.
The Wilson materials, just for the materials, cost $22,000. That does not include the professional development. So that's also part of the plan that we want. The one piece that we look at too is, I, I respect that thought and agree with that. The one piece we also look at in the scaffolding as we did with elementary is we did not do all of the PD and purchasing at the same time because teachers can't implement everything at the same time. So if we were to reinstate the curriculum and PD budgets, we wouldn't have to slow down what we're doing at the middle school or the high school at all to fit that in. We'd, we'd be just fine to keep on pace. But we wouldn't have added that this year to the elementary because they're focusing on writing. And that was intentional to first focus on reading. And then Letterland and Words Their Way, that's the foundation for everybody. And then we scaffold years up, adding some more of those tier two, tier three services that we invest in. But to do reading and writing and Wilson or Orton Gillingham at the same time, the teachers, one, we don't have time to pull them out of the classroom. They'd be gone 15 days out of the school year. The cost for subs in one year would be expensive, so I hope that answers.
Those are some of the trade offs.
Yes.
And as, and as you know, and you know well, and you alluded to that when you started off, you're looking at a plan to cover 10 years. Some districts, it's 14 years. And, and the amounts, I, I know they're huge because they always have been. But when you're talking about a million dollars or a million and a half dollars, those are huge. But those are not untypical. That's what curriculum adoptions, that's the kind of dollars typically you call, talk about. Last thing though, that hasn't changed. They always said it would. Textbooks would, or books to read would be online and that was going to be so much of a cost savings. Boy, I don't see that happening. You know, those costs are, are still there. I wish it was and I hope there's that search for, where you can be more diligent. But I think one way to get adaptations, and you have to, is priorities. In other words, to get it up and going and then keep coming back. And sometimes, and you did that, you spread it over, okay, maybe we can't do it all in one year. How do we spread it over three years?
Yeah, and one thing to point out is 10, 11 years ago, when we did the last implementation, unfortunately, there were some changes. And then as you maybe recall, some significant budget cuts in the district and we didn't get to finish that. I wasn't here, but you'll hear the teachers say that it just, it was unfortunate. We spent well over a million dollars for that. When you approved the elementary literacy adoption, that was for $660,000 total over about two and a half, three years. And when you add that with the total package that we're not asking you to approve tonight, but the total package with PD and everything, including that Wilson, that's a part of some of this, you're looking at 500,000 roughly. So you're looking at 1.1 million over three years of a total K-12 package, which is very cost effective. And as you said, online subscriptions, that was the journey for a while, but people realized and companies realized. So they increased fees and we can't keep up. And students weren't enjoying a lot of the online. The only option of online was not applicable to all learners.
Anyone else?
Well, I, thank you, if you could say, so correct me, but I, we had a discussion about this. So 42K were cut in the writing curriculum. Is that accurate in the, and then PD, we cut 598,000 FY '20. Curriculum, 250,000. So I just, as I've been very vocal about this, but gets in my craw. We have a program, we don't fund it fully. And then we make cuts and, and things start trickling away and, and being far less than what, what they could have been and should have been. So with that, I would like to make a motion that the school board approves the secondary English language arts curriculum.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Further questions, comments?
This may be related to what you were just talking about, Liz. I don't think so though. So I'm looking at the, the presentation you just gave tonight. So I'm looking at the presentation you just gave tonight, and where it talks about the E-12 literacy framework for middle school. So if you look across the top, it's Letterland, Letterland, Words Their Way. So Letterland for pre-K, Letterland for kindergarten and one, Words Their Way for two through five, and then middle school, it says, "to be determined." Can you tell me what exactly, why is that? And what will happen there?
So the reason why we haven't brought anything forward, and we will for you, is just because of the time element. We didn't have time, as we dove in, and you heard part of the process. We had to focus just on the essential curriculum, and then we're going to dive into what are those structured literacy components that we need to help support and teach along with. So it addresses one of the misconceptions, that units of study is the only thing we're using as the curriculum for all, and that's not true. But we had to start with that. And so when we reconvene as a committee, we'll start looking into, what are those pieces that we want to help with specific phonics instruction at some of the sixth grade level, or depending upon where the kids come in with skills, and some of those more structural pieces of literacy.
Like grammar and-
Yep.
Things like that. And then, it says somewhere else, and I can't find it now, I think it's actually in the budget page, that writing is put off. Writing is on hold. Writing has been postponed. So talk a little bit more about what that looks like, in terms of what's the future, what's the plan?
Sure. So as Director Pelletier mentioned, we did not get to train and implement grades three through five this year. And the reason for that was because, when we planned out the budget for the next two, three years for elementary adoption and all the priorities, we, when the budget cuts were approved last year, that adjusted our priorities for this year. And so because we didn't have enough in the budget to do K-5, what we prioritized is, we can't start at three through five, because students will come up with varied skills and it won't be organized. So we're going to start K-2 with implementation. So this is the first year that kindergarten through second grade are implementing writing. And then next year, that will be part of the plan at the elementary level. It's just not listed, because that's not the proposal we're bringing. But they are getting trained next year. And that total cost is $42,000. But that was part of the package that was approved in 2018.
Yeah, so what's the, I guess, we're looking at secondary. So what is right, what's the writing component of this proposal?
We are looking at, so the writing component is units of study with some of the other structured components that we'll look at. So we haven't had a lot of time to dive into some of the instructional approaches we want to look at for writing, because that's that TBD, "to be determined yet." But writing is a part of all of the standards that get delivered. And even the textbook adoption that we're proposing for the high school, the HMH, has strong components of that in it. But writing is something that we want to have these resources to teach it with, so that it's consistent and aligned, because right now, we don't have that.
Okay.
Yeah. And before we vote, one of the things I do want to commend everybody on your approach, I think one of the things you can see and hear is that this board has a lot of questions. And they don't look at this in a superficial, I mean, they dive in, and I know that it's challenging for you, but what you've done tonight, that I think was most appropriate, one, you proved you were listening. And that's important to us. And the other thing, we got, we never lose track of that, is there is a lot of funding that's involved here. So we take this very, very serious. And we also take what you're doing for our kids very serious. So thank you. Any other comments people have? If not, I think we'll move the motion, unless somebody has other comments. Everybody understand the motion, and that the board approved the secondary English Language Arts curriculum? Question?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd just like to make a comment. I want to reiterate what other people have said. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I love all the enthusiasm, and I appreciate everything you do for our students every day. I know this is a lot of work. This is, this is, change is, you know, change is hard, and this is, sounds like a pretty big change from how we've been doing things in the past. I don't know. I voted against the, this literacy program for the elementary school, because I don't believe it's the right thing for us to do, and it's very expensive. And I still have the same concerns that I had before. And I don't know if this is the right way for us to go secondary as well. I have a lot of questions about whether or not this is the right thing for our schools and for our students. And I guess I would like to be able to explore that. I think, if I'm not mistaken, this is a curriculum that's been outlawed in the state of Oklahoma, because it's not effective. It was used-
I think Arkansas.
Or, Arkansas? Oh, I was looking at another piece of research, where they studied literacy in Oklahoma schools. It was used in New York City schools, found to not be effective, and they got rid of it. And there were a lot of angry parents before that happened, so it was a big, huge, stressful time for the city of New York. And so, you know, just in doing a little bit more research, and I think some of the most recent research in reading science is showing that, you know, maybe this isn't the best way for us to teach our kids how to read. And I just personally, I still have a lot of questions about that. And I think before, we're going to make an investment in something that's going to take us through the next 10 years. If it's the wrong thing, boy, we're going to be stuck with the wrong thing for a long time. I know some of the other districts in our Twin Cities area that have really high levels of, you know, MCA performance, are using something called core knowledge at the secondary level. I'm very intrigued by that. I would like to learn more about that. It sounds like it's a really, really effective curriculum for reading and writing. And maybe that's something we should be looking at. So I guess I would, for me, I would prefer if we waited and did a little bit more work to make sure that this is the right thing for our students. Mostly because I do realize it is a big investment that we're going to be stuck with for a long time.
May I respond to that?
Sure.
Okay. I believe some of the comments that you're sharing with us come from an advocate and a parent in the community. And that information was shared directly out of a workshop that was sponsored by the International Dyslexia Association. And we've done a lot of research looking at their resources. But what they don't do is comprehensively look at the totality of research on the science of reading. Even the article that was shared this afternoon at 1:02 PM, I did the background work before I came here tonight, and I checked the references for that article to see where the actual research scientifically was proven. I found five of the references were related to serving students with special education or sponsored by associations of special education, and three were for those done in regular education. So I think we have to be really careful when we're making comparisons or throwing data out that may not be applicable. The other piece with comparing to high schools, we look and we talk as curriculum leaders across the metro, and we always look at the variables. And so we're talking about what's working and what isn't. And this is something that a lot of districts are saying, well, we want to look into it, we just aren't on the cycle for a while. But we also have to look at the other variables that are part of MCA. Where are all the students at? And how are they growing? Or are they coming to us at 85% proficient, and we're just letting them matriculate up the system? Because there's a difference between getting a student to grow from one level of proficiency to the next, and having students that show up as proficient and just continuing along their journey. So we share all those concerns, but we have to look at the data, the curriculum, the support structures in place. There are so many variables that I think are part of just that comparison for curriculums that you mentioned.
Those are the very items that I feel like are missing from this program. You can't just find the right book at the right level and instill joy for students in reading if they can't read. And if they're struggling and they're behind grade level, it's the very students that are struggling are the ones that we need to focus on. And so I'm all for instilling the joy of reading, but the only way we can, I mean, first, you need to know how to read, to be able to do that.
So as someone who taught reading at the high school for many, many years, I can say that in a general education classroom, students do know how to read, but they are behind reading level. By the time students get to the secondary level, if they are not reading, they have most likely been identified for special education and are receiving intensive services that way.
Of course, I'm not talking about not being able to read. I'm, of course, behind grade level. Right.
So when I was teaching reading, I had students who were reading anywhere, anywhere from the third grade reading level, up to probably the ninth grade reading level at the high school. And I worked to find books that would serve each of those students, so I could build readers, and so they could build their skills. So it is possible to match students to text, to help them grow and to stretch. It takes a teacher who is passionate about reading. It takes a teacher who's passionate about books, and passionate about matching kids to books. And honestly, having a media specialist in each of our buildings would help as well.
Liz?
Your MCA comment reminded me of a different question that I had. Has there been any, any look into the areas where we did need more help in improving our MCA scores? And does this curriculum address that?
One of the areas in the strands of the MCA is comprehension. So one of the questions we ask when the MCA comes back is, as teachers look at that, is, we've looked, and we taught that all along, our students should perform better, because in the classroom, they're showing a different performance level. And one of the situations that we find with that are the comprehension strategies when they're posed with a new text that they haven't read before. So that would be one area of example.
So during our research, we reached out to other districts in the area. South Washington is using a workshop model in the middle school. They're also looking into Words Their Way for word study at the middle school level. Their high school is novel-based in some buildings and textbook-based in others. Currently, well, currently, our high school is novel-based. White Bear Lake, the middle schools are using units of study, and the high schools are novel-based. Wayzata, sixth and seventh grade are using an HMH textbook and units of study writing. Eighth grade is using a perfection learning textbook and units of study writing. And ninth through 12th grade, they are using many individual texts. And New Prague is using HMH into literature. So those are some of the curriculum people that I was able to contact when I reached out to districts in the metro area.
Okay. Let me, let me ask a question here, because if possible, I like to avoid log jams or log aids or that sort of thing. When do you have to have this? In other words, what I'm saying is that if we tonight were to table this, a meeting, several meetings, is that a huge disadvantage? I think one of the things that we accomplished tonight, and I thank you for that, and I'm saying that collectively, is I think you answered a lot of our questions, and I appreciate that. I can't speak for others, but I learned a lot tonight, and I appreciate your efforts. Again, it's pretty serious stuff, but I'm saying, rather than face, for one thing, we're six people tonight, we're missing one member. So I'm wondering if we push that out, a meeting, two meetings, and perhaps even longer, is that going to cause you significant problems?
From a financial perspective, it absolutely can, because if this gets delayed and we're not able to move on the recommendations that we've spent a year researching and beta testing to show the evidence of improvement, that's going to impact, it's going to slow down science for us next year, too. And so that will then have a ripple effect on pushing science out till the next year, because we'll have to transfer money. I think the bigger concern I have, too, is that, with all respect, this is the committee of experts in teaching English. They have many years of teaching behind their belt. We've done the research. I guess I ask, if this isn't approved, who do you turn to, to make the decision? If not, the teachers and the Learning and Innovation Department. I don't know what that would look like. And I, I mean, if it's going to be, I just, I think that has to be a serious consideration, because we are the trained experts that bring this forward after much serious consideration.
And I'd also like to add that we have an outstanding quote from a vendor that may expire. I don't have the exact date of the expiration. But those are usually 30 to 60 days, and I can't guarantee a price for those materials after the quote expires. And they very often raise their prices as of January 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
This is very quick, and this will be my last one. Since this is a 10-year project, basically, is there a reason that parents or dyslexia experts weren't on the committee? I know that, I think there were three presented, and then the teachers picked the one they liked the best. And because it is such a big deal, I'm just curious why parents or dyslexia experts weren't also brought in?
Typically, parents are not in an internal curriculum review process, because they don't always have the same knowledge base. We have consulted with various dyslexia experts, but I really hesitate to focus just on dyslexia when up to, may have, 15 to 20% of the population showing attributes of or a diagnosis of. We have English language learners in this district. We have other areas of special education learners in this district. We are here to serve all. We do not start with a curriculum that's been proven through special education research to just be structural literacy. We have to respond to every learner, make sure we're meeting and being culturally responsive, meeting the needs of every learner in front of us. And that is the balanced approach. And so we are not ignoring the needs of students with dyslexia. But I can't make a recommendation that every student in our district should only receive the structured literacy approach that has been proven to work with students who have attributes of and/or a diagnosis of. I would not be serving every family, every student in this district. And we do have parents on the committee, too, so they have their kids in the system invested as well.
Could I just add, what is the impact on students and staff if this does not pass?
Well, that's a good question. Students are not going to continue with the model of having the high engagement, the variety of texts at their level, so teachers can teach them where they're at and help them grow. They're going to go back to the former method, which, again, was not a whole language approach. We have not been teaching balanced literacy for the past 10 years in this district, even though someone shared that with you. That's not accurate. This is new. And as you heard tonight from the teachers, they've had to learn how to do this. So that proves that we have not been doing balanced literacy. The impact on teachers, I think I would ask them. I mean, I don't know. The teachers that have had the professional development and dove in, I think you've heard from them how they feel about it, and how they've seen growth in their students. And that is the number-one denominator in why we beta test, is how does this actually work, and how is it different than what we've been doing?
I just have to, I'm sorry, I'm trying not to be utterly offended that we are not listening to our staff and these people that have spent so much time on this curriculum. I don't understand why we are not listening to the people that we hire to make these tough decisions for us. We're not teachers, we're not administrators, we're not academics.
Sarah?
I think the answer to that question is what you just said, Rachel, that this is really different than how we've taught in the past. This is asking a lot of our teachers to change. And what would be the harm in, if you're going to be beta testing for this year, what would be the harm in beta testing a larger, slightly larger group of people for a little bit more time, and really decide if this is what works?
Because the research we've dove into does not lead us to another path. It leads us to where we are here, which is why we formed the basis and had the robust conversations and discussions about what's best for students. I respect that, but I think where does it stop and where does it end? If we're going to listen to the dyslexia community on structured literacy, then that's one piece. But then I think we need to welcome in every perspective across the district of parent groups and parents that represent a variety of all learners.
I don't disagree with that at all.
And I'd like to say that I've been in contact with someone who's very knowledgeable about dyslexia. And she's pointed to me to some resources about structured literacy. I think you may remember, Director Weisberg and I were chatting about what does structured literacy mean for the secondary level. And the resources that she pointed to me, or pointed me to, and the resources that are available that I've found on the IDA website, and the resources that I've found on the Minnesota Department of Education Dyslexia Specialist website, one are written by- by a well-known researcher in the area of special education, which is great, but the primary focus is on using those materials in the area of special education and then talking about general education as an afterthought. Those resources also speak very much to the idea of teaching phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, and error correction. Those are early reading skills. It makes offhanded comments about teaching text structure, which all of these people already do. It talks about teaching children how to write sentences, grammar, that type of stuff. All of these people do that. So I think there's a misunderstanding, and I don't doubt that there are some things that people do with structured literacy related to middle and secondary or high school. But every single resource that I have been pointed to so far leans very heavily towards special education and to early reading skills. Another dyslexia specialist in the area that we've met with has talked quite a bit about how do we support our dyslexic learners through technology at the secondary level? Because by the time dyslexic students get to the secondary level, I shared with you last time I was here, the effect of phonics instruction drops up precipitously after first grade. And after sixth grade, there's virtually no effect. So teaching phonics to older children is, it needs to be done in a very specialized environment with very specialized people. And these people behind me are highly trained in English language arts. They are not trained in teaching one-to-one phonemic awareness, phonics, and fluency instruction. That is something that needs to be done by a trained specialist, and it is incredibly expensive to provide one-on-one instruction like that. I witnessed it happen several years ago. Kim Ellenbecker at the secondary level worked one-on-one with a high school student using Wilson Reading System with him. He ended up being very successful and went to college. So it can work, but not in a whole classroom environment at the secondary level. That is not where this type of learning needs to be at the secondary level.
Thank you.
Chair, I think Superintendent had...
I'd just like to add, you know, we've talked a lot about our teachers' knowledge and expertise, and one of the things that makes the difference in the classroom is teacher efficacy. Do our teachers believe in what they're teaching? Do they feel like they're prepared? Have they had the professional development, which obviously this group has had? And I would just say to the board that this process, you know, we've spent an hour and a half maybe here talking about this, and I know it's important, but if we aren't going to trust our teachers to come forward to give us the recommendation based on the research, based on their work together, knowing our student needs, to Rachel's point earlier, who are you going to trust? They are coming forward, they know what they need for their kids in their classrooms, and we need to support it.
I'm sorry, I don't think it's a matter of not trusting, I think this group... And I think what a lot of people are asking tonight is, you know, maybe we need to involve more people, maybe we need to involve parents, maybe we need to involve dyslexia experts. It's not that we're not trusting teachers. They were offered three choices, and they picked one.
I don't believe that's accurate, that they were offered three. I think they looked at...
They narrowed it down to three. They narrowed it down. And one thing I'd like to offer as perspective, too, is we were once asked to become Grove's Academy of the East. And Grove's Academy is a private school that specifically supports students with learning disabilities. That's who they take in. They charge $30,000 a year. They are not accountable to the state-level assessments, and they can prioritize and focus on specific instruction. We are a public school. We serve every student before us. And I wish we had all the funds to give every student what they need and a specialized teacher for every need that needed to be pulled out of the classroom for more. I don't know how we do it.
Yeah, but Karen, just let me stop you there if we can, because we're trying to figure out, I'm counting votes, and I'm trying to weigh all this sort of thing. And I'm not sure we're reaching a point where we're just saying it louder and clearer and all that. And I respect that, and I think I have as much respect for what's sitting there as I do what's sitting up here. But also, I think what you said earlier is we have some time, and I'm not sure what that is. And I've leaned over to...
I'm sorry, did I say that?
Well, you said you had, you had till January with a vendor's offer, anyway.
I think she said 30 to 60 days.
I'm not sure when the quotes expire.
Sure.
They could expire, like, next week. I'm not quite sure.
But when, so I think what's being weighed is it could be a no, or is it better to wait three weeks and then it may, and I don't know, I don't know what everybody's going to vote up here, but that could be the question.
Bob?
I just want to ask this. What will you learn in three weeks that you don't know now?
That's my question. And I ask...
Well, for one thing, in a week, we'll have seven people up here. Right now, we have six.
I'd also ask, and from whom? Because I don't think we've heard from all representatives of who we are to serve. I think we've heard from a small population. Do you have a number of how many parents have emailed you with concerns about our elementary curriculum that are outside or inside the topic of dyslexia? I haven't received any.
Some. I don't think it's strictly an area, granted, there are some dyslexia the most important thing to them. I don't think it's completely that.
Sure. Sarah? Anybody else?
Our MCA third-grade reading level was 58%. That's terrible. I don't need to get emails from parents to know that that's not good. We need to do better. We have a very intelligent and capable community. We can do better.
I agree that 58% is not acceptable. I would like to dial back to 2010, when the last adoption was thwarted by the board. The elementary program decided to purchase, then after the board decision, they decided to purchase Journeys Curriculum, which is a packaged basal reader. It was poorly implemented through no fault of the reading specialists or the learning and innovation team that was on board at the time. The teachers were terribly against it, and most of them refused to use it. And that purchase sat on teacher shelves, not even being cracked open. And so if you want to see why our third-grade reading scores are terrible, I think we need to think about the fact that kids have been taught in a random order for years, since 2010, because teachers rejected the curriculum, and we need to build that foundation. Dr. Tinkham is right. We need to build a foundation, and it's going to take more than one year to get kids up to third grade and up to speed.
In 19, or in 2013, that level was at 71, almost 72%. So it's been declining since 2013.
And I would say that is due to the chaos that we have been trying to clean up since we came on board in 2013. This is the first chance, in 2018 was the first chance, that we were able to right the ship with elementary curriculum. Up until that point, teachers were working as hard as they could, they were working in isolation, and they were cobbling together their own materials because the materials that the board expected them to purchase were not appropriate, and they were not used. And so we are seeing the aftereffects of years and years of students being taught in that manner. And so to say that we could turn around all children from second to third grade to make them all proficient, when the teachers are just learning the materials, is inappropriate. Melinda Fierro mentioned earlier that Dr. Michael Folen talks about the implementation dip. It could take three to five years for us to see solid results, and if you look at the growth that we're seeing, we are seeing growth from our students. You cannot continue to look simply at proficiency levels because it's difficult to move children in reading. And they started out behind, and they're continuing behind, but they are growing, and that's what we need them to do. And we need to give the teachers time and training. Both at the elementary, we need to continue elementary training, and we need to support our secondary teachers in this implementation, and we need to stop abandoning things that we've started.
Okay. Shelley?
Do you want him to go first? I think maybe just to add a little that, one, it's getting late, but, two, just, I think that everybody in this room wants what's best for kids. And I don't think, unfortunately, it's become a board against teachers, and that is not what it is. And I, you know, when you talked about the 2010 was thwarted by the board and the teachers were opposed, there may be a flip-flop of that tonight where the board has concerns that maybe we won't reach the needs of all of our kids, and of course, you're the experts. We also don't want to be rubber stampers. So there's got to be some kind of give and take so that we all feel good about the decision that we make. So it's not that we don't think that your expertise is valuable, it's just that their concerns have come up, and we're trying to figure out what's the best thing to do.
I respect that, Director Pearson. I just have to put the question out there. Whose expertise are you asking? And I think that's the prioritization. We're trained professionals, and from my lens, what I hear a lot of is what a few parents have suggested and sent via email that some of you thankfully shared with me, and one finally included me on today.
I think that's not the only, I think you got that email, but I don't think that's what, I think that's a small portion of where questions are coming from, but I think others is just different people and what their experience is and what they've seen.
I do still ask, who are the experts that you trust?
There's no question that you're the experts.
Well, we're not being heard, though. We're being presented with information that's counter to...
We're raising questions, and they're not being honored either. We're raising questions.
Could we hear from Mr. Quick, please?
I guess the question was asked earlier, like, what happens if we wait? And, you know, I was expecting, and my colleagues were expecting, to have materials in hand when school started, and we didn't have them. And then we thought, well, we'll have them by October. We don't have them. We didn't have them by November. I guess what I'd ask, I'm kind of this amateur parliamentarian sometimes, and I think there was a motion to approve, and I think it was seconded, and I guess I would like a vote. And I want to be able to go back with some answer, like, either we're doing this, we're not doing it. And I see you have six people, and I, but I think I would like to just see the vote. And that would be my request, so that I can take something definitive back, which is better than sort of this kind of continue, I just don't know. And I have to go see students tomorrow, and I got to see them on Monday, and if I said, I don't really know quite where we're going to be, that's a really hard place to put teachers in. So my request is that you do that, because it is late, and I haven't had my dinner yet, and I'm getting crabby. Thank you.
What do you want to do?
I would like to call a vote.
Okay. And there's been a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your right hand, please.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, raise your right hand.
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails, 3-3.
Oh, my God.
Thank you.
We are so sorry.
We're moving right along, and we're on action items. School Board liaisons.
I'm actually going to move to postpone this until the next meeting. We didn't have a chance to discuss today, and because of the hour, I'm going to ask that we postpone.
I would second that.
Okay, we can do that. All those in favor of postponing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Raise your right hand, please.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so school board liaisons will be postponed to our next meeting. And we are down to action items. Policy, and it looks like C, family and medical leave.
Okay, this is our final reading for policy 410, which is the family and medical leave policy. I think it is in our packet in its final form. This is pretty much straight out of statute. It aligns with MSBA. We've made the changes that we needed to make, and it's ready for a vote.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
So moved.
Shelley moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your right hand, please.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We are on to, it looks like, policy 620, credit for learning.
That's correct. Policy number 620, credit for learning. This is also, this is our final reading. We have taken this policy and added a definition of PSEO in the definition area. I can't remember. I think it's at the end. Oh, no, it's right here. Post-secondary enrollment options. I think that's taken straight from MDE. It gives a little definition of what PSEO is. We had a discussion of whether or not PSEO classes and honors classes should be weighted grades as part of a grade point average for students, and we came to the conclusion that we would like to keep it the same. We're not going to weight those grades. PSEO classes are not actually our classes, they're part of a different learning institution. And honors classes are typically more junior high, more middle school, and they're just not the same as being like an AP class. So if anybody has anything further to say about that, go up right ahead.
I had an example that was supposed to sort of clarify it, because my son has taken PSEO English, and he's also taken PSEO bowling. And so the comparison was, if we were to give every PSEO class more credit, then he would also get credit for his bowling class. And that's, that doesn't make a lot of sense. Do you, because I think Shelley would...
Yeah, that makes sense. And I think, I don't want to belabor this, but I think if we considered core classes, because they are taking a class in a semester opposed to the whole year, which they do at the high school. So it is, you know, but at some point down the road, if we want to talk about, we want to treat core classes differently.
Yeah. And they are getting a college credit for that class, too. So, I mean, if they're not going to be a weighted grade, they're...
But why wouldn't you have, if I took bowling, and it could be archery, it could be a lot of things, wouldn't that substitute for physical education?
Yeah, but they're not weighting it. That's the question.
Right. And that's what the comparison was, because then where do you draw the line? What gets more credit, what doesn't? And then if it were to get so complicated that we just thought, leave it how it is now?
Maybe go out there and prove your skills now.
That's right.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I think that's it.
Okay.
It's ready for week...
A motion?
So moved.
Liz moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Tina, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of policy 620, credit for learning, signify by saying aye and raise your right hand, please.
Aye.
Aye. Looks like it passed unanimously. Did I get that right? Okay, we are on to E, JPA for elections between Washington County and School District 834.
So the JPA is for the Joint Powers Agreement between Washington County and the School District. This is an updated agreement that was last entered into July 1, 2007. So it's been several years since Washington County has asked us to update this. Washington County manages the school district elections. Contracting with Washington County allows for us to have more polling places, longer hours for voting, and a more efficient process for reporting our results. The board has had the proposed agreement from Washington County. Administration recommends adoption of a board resolution authorizing entry into a joint powers agreement between Washington County and the School District of Stillwater for the purpose of managing our school district elections.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Sarah, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your right hand, please.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, I believe. Now we are on to memorandum on follow-up to audit findings, and I'm the one who's blessed with talking about that. Those of you, excuse me, those of you who have a hard copy packet, it is found on page Those of you, excuse me, those of you who have a hard copy packet, it is found on page eighty.
Mike?
Yes.
Just on that last one that I had, that Denise Superintendent actually read that, but there was no first motion. It was just seconded by-
Thank you.
Director Stivland, I believe. So we needed to have a first, because that was read by their superintendent.
Okay, so I'll go with Liz as a first. Is there a second to Liz's motion?
Sarah.
I'll take the second.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so, thank you.
We don't have to read the resolution, do we?
No.
It says, we, do we, wait a second. Wasn't there, um, don't we have to say-
No, it's not a resolution.
Oh, it's unanimous. It's unanimous, so we know everything.
Yeah. It is not a resolution. We'll vote again. Because if it's a resolution, it needs a voice vote individually. Okay. All those in favor of the motion as made and seconded concerning elections between Washington County and School District eight-thirty-four signify by saying aye and raising your right hand, please.
Aye.
And it looks like it's unanimous. We're on to memorandum on follow-up to audit findings, and that's me. And I'll give you a little bit of background on it. We did get an audit report on September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, cited for findings which described four discrepancies. The district's internal control over compliance with the federal procurement requirements for special education programs was the first one. The second one was compliance with the competitive bidding requirements for certain contracts. The third one was compliance with the requirements for quotes on certain contracts. And then the fourth one was failure to obtain the required certifications from the Commissioner of Revenue on certain contracts. And so I have been approached by numerous board members, my colleagues, who wanted further investigation on that. They have submitted questions numerous times, and they felt, in many ways, that those were not complete. I also received a fair amount of email asking about the, the audit itself, and what were the facts and what weren't the facts. And so I, I think there was a significant amount of doubt there. And so I asked counsel to prepare the memorandum, which you have before you. I wish I had gotten it earlier than I did, but it's still a long time since September eighteenth. But this memorandum is done publicly, so we'll know what we're asking for. We've asked for other information, obviously. We asked a ton of questions tonight that had to do with secondary literacy. If the board instructs that we go ahead with the memorandum, and that's up to the people who are sitting, sitting up here tonight, and if the majority prevails, that's what we will do. And we will issue that to Superintendent Pontrelli to follow up on that. If it fails to carry a, a majority, then it's done. Some people, and I'm okay with that, you can put my name on it, I was one of the people that felt that you should come forward. I would tell you, I was not alone. I received a fair amount of, of email concerning this issue. And, and I quite honestly felt that it came from a wide spectrum of perspectives that were out there. I feel that it's very consistent with doing our due diligence to find out what happened. And what's been more, and more importantly on this is not what happened that is important, but I think also it's to follow up what procedures we put in place so it won't happen again. One of our open forum speakers today raised the question, well, is that a fair amount of time? It's a good question. Counsel and myself discussed that and set the date of December thirteenth, but we don't want that to be the hangup. So if it needs to be extended further than that, we'll be open to consideration. But at this point, what I'm asking for is a motion and a second that Superintendent Pontrelli provide a written report to the school board no later than December thirteenth, addressing all the findings outlined in the memorandum.
So moved.
Okay, so it's been moved, and I put the motion out there. Further questions or comments?
Well, Chair, yes, I have-
I'll second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a wide variety, and I'd first, I, to make things easy, I'm just going to start with Director Burns's comments and question. This memorandum is yet another board exercise into voting time and resources into the past. The taxpayers of this district paid for a professional audit to study the performance -- I just heard whispering, I wanted to make sure that everyone was listening -- of the district's finance office, including by investigating the very issues that are the subject of this memorandum. The professional auditors determined that the district's financial operations, including its contracting, record-keeping, and reporting, were satisfactory. This board unanimously approved the auditor's determinations. Why then must we reopen the investigation? Second question, why must we continue to look, oh, boy, this is a-
Rearwardly.
This is a legal term.
Rearwardly.
Rearwardly. Apologize. Basically, look backwards. When so much work lies before us, are we certain that our path to success must find fault in the past? I am not convinced. I guess, Chair, I, I'd like to direct his questions and my question to you directly. Who wrote this memo?
As I said, I, I got this from counsel. We had some original ones that were written before that. I did talk to Director Burns about this as well. That doesn't mean he necessarily acquiesced in this, but we did converse on it.
So our attorney, our school district attorney wrote this memo?
After some submissions originally on it.
Who made the submissions?
I raised questions.
I did, too.
Okay, so-
And I raised, I sat with the, with the audit. I was interviewed by the audit team.
I raised my own questions with her as well.
So four board members raised questions.
And I would say, I did send Superintendent Pontrelli an email before. I knew that others had raised concerns, just saying to lay this to rest. I think we could just share, um, share more details around it and what the corrective action was and-
And we don't know still.
Hmm.
I thought we had put together, and I, Kristen isn't here, I thought the corrective action was, okay, thank you.
So, do you?
I would like to hear.
Do you, can I?
Yeah.
Can you finish? First, I'd like to just share, for the board to look at the summary in the report for action on the memo, cited four findings which described deficiency. They weren't deficiencies, they were findings. So I'd like the record to reflect that. And then also, just to comment, for the, the meeting, the requirement as far as pulling this report together, we've actually almost already finished it. But one of the things that will not be able to be completed, and for those of you who are, know your finance background, the, conducting the internal review of contracts and purchases from vendors in the last three years to determine whether additional contracts, purchases were made without compliance with the competitive bidding quote law, and submitting a report on the outcome of that for a review. That's in several places throughout this letter. You know, doing that within a district for the normal spending is a very lengthy process. That's why you have auditors, teams of them come in, working for weeks and weeks to do that. To do it for all of these areas and then include the hundred-million-dollar bond project, it's not possible. So I, those of you probably know that. So as we look at the report, all of the questions can be answered. I would argue that, no, we haven't done a full report of all of these, but all of the things that are stated in here have already been answered in some shape or form. So we put it together in a report for you already, but we will not be able to make the December thirteenth timeline with respect to the places where it calls for an internal review. And the last piece with that is, I think that's kind of interesting, the internal review, because what I'm feeling right now, and we've had a conversation as administration, it's clear that you don't trust the work, or there are questions from people about that. So why would you do, have an internal review? Our concern would be that after a lengthy completion of that process, there would still be doubt. So from that perspective, if that is an issue, then the board should consider doing a, an outside audit.
I think that was what was said at the end of the memorandum also. But I would just like to address the, the corrective measures that we heard, just specifically, action planned, the district will review policies and procedures relating to the prospective finding to ensure compliance with, and then it would say, the prospective finding. The statement under plan to monitor states, the district's executive director of finance and operations will ensure appropriate internal controls and procedures that are updated and in place to ensure compliance for future federal award expenditures. And specifically, when we had asked, because the whole point is, we don't want this to happen again. It's not clear what happened in three out of the four findings. If we don't know what happened, how can we prevent it from happening again? And if we don't know, as a board, what's in place so that it doesn't happen again, again, how can we prevent that it happened again? And we, and those questions have been asked and not answered with enough specificity.
Okay. Anyone else? Jen?
Well, yeah, I'm number six on this. Ms. Hoheisel has informed the school board that it should solicit requests for proposals for audit services. Explain the reasoning for this recommendation. I don't, I don't understand this. I'm very confused by this. I mean, out of the law, the very lawsuits, Liz, with your husband, that what came out of this was that we are soliciting bids for, we are soliciting bids. I, I have a, a sheet that, that, one was a sent, that's it, thank you. When was that, Bob? Could you just please speak to that?
I just had it for number six, because Kristen couldn't be, be here. But I would remind the board that with regard to number six, on May twenty-third, at the one-hour-and-forty-two-ish mark, Kristen shared the, the bids that would be going out to the school board. And it was the sheet. And if you go down to the blue section on the sheet, the financial auditor for RFPs is the next one on the list.
And when was that, again?
This was May twenty-third.
So how is that-
That's not my question. I, I don't, I, I thought we were going to do that. I thought that's what we were going to do at the next finance committee meeting. Number six is not my question, so I can't answer that one for you.
Okay, who wrote number six?
I don't know.
It says, explain the, all it did is, it said that, if I'm, if I'm interpreting, try and, again, because Kristen couldn't hear, the six says, explain the reasoning for the recommendation.
So I, I think, Bob, what you're saying is this was long in the works-
Yeah.
--dating back from May twenty-third. That's, that's a response.
Again, I'm just explaining that Kristen wanted you to know that it's been in the works. It isn't her recommendation. It's the next one on the list.
So why is this?
I don't, that's not my question. I don't know. Because I thought we were going to do that.
It's my question. Why is, who wrote number six?
I didn't write it.
Well, we, we don't even know who wrote this?
Well, we, we know.
That's one. That's the least of the concerns of this memorandum.
No, no, what, what I'm saying here, Jen, and, and don't be mistaken, I thought out of the recent finance meeting, it came out that we were soliciting a bids.
It did, but what, number six states is-
And some people raised the question legitimately, did that just come out of thin air? And according to what Bob is saying, this was long in the works, but you're saying that secondhand. You, you don't know.
Well, we shared it with the board. I mean, it's-
It's been shared with the board.
In January.
It actually was then followed up with, if I understand correctly, it was part of an email that went out to the board, as well as a superintendent's update as well.
Yeah.
And so I just think it's important with number six, because Ms. Hoheisel's being called out in this.
Okay. We'll check it out, I promise.
And I'd like to just add one more thing for the board and community to consider before, you know, if you decide that spending the money on an, on audit, another audit of some kind is important, then we're, you know, obviously, that's fine. But I also want to just, I know the board is aware that there was, board members called the state auditor, and the state auditor had a conversation with Director Hoheisel, and I went through a number of questions, processes, what we had shared with the board previously, and said, I'm going to refer the board back to the audit because it's clean and I'm content with it. So you have our auditors, you have the state auditors, saying that it's a clean report, and I'm urging the board to move forward.
And I, I was in the meeting, Chair, you were with me. So we have a board member that called the state. Did you know about that before you and I?
I don't know who that is, or what.
Was that the first time you had heard that a board member called the state?
Well, I'm just going on what I heard a few minutes ago. In the past, has it occurred, I suspect?
Okay.
I don't know if that's recent, a long time ago or what.
I have something to say.
Thank you.
Sarah?
I, I feel like there's a little bit of misunderstanding about this, because we had an audit. We approved the audit because we didn't have a problem with the audit itself. They, they did the work, they, it gave us the results, and we approved it because it was done correctly. In that, so to go back and say, why did we approve the audit? That doesn't have anything to do with the findings that were in the audit. And so there are findings in the audit. As a board, we're trying to figure out what that means. It's our job, as, as responsible stewards of this community, it's our job to make sure that everything is being done correctly. It's not about trust, it's, it's about accountability. It's about checking to make sure things are being done right. And I just wish it wasn't so completely contentious, because really, we're supposed to be working together, and we're supposed to be able to talk about these things. And what happened was, when people asked specifically about the findings, we really did not get an answer. I did not feel comfortable with the answer. Obviously, you did not feel comfortable with the answer. Others did not feel comfortable with the answer. And so that's why we, that's why I contacted the legal, legal counsel, because I wanted to ask, what should I do as a board member? Is this important? And as it turns out, it seems important. So we really do want to understand exactly what happened.
And when, I questioned back as to not being content with the answer, the answer I received back was, I already gave you an answer.
And can I, the very first finding says, the audit tested only one vendor and found it out of compliance. And so to me, that raises a red flag. What if it tested two? What if it was three? What if it, if, if one out of one was found out of compliance, that's, that's disturbing. And so what happened? We weren't ever given those answers. And the main, the main point is that we don't want it to happen again. And if we don't look into it, we can't ensure that it's not going to happen again.
Exactly.
Any other questions or comments?
I will just make a comment. I, this is, um, this is about as far as one gets from working together. I'll say that, for one.
I know we, we've probably belabored it, but I, my desire in this, as I saw emails going back and forth and knew that it wasn't productive or fruitful, when I sent an email to Superintendent Pontrelli, was so that we can work together, so we can lay this to rest. Can we do these things? And the, her suggestion was to, to share it with Liz, and maybe we could talk about at Finance Working Group. And so I did, and I think this was already happening. But I think, I think the reason, I think people started out trying to work together and trying to gain an understanding, and just felt like they weren't getting their questions answered in a way that they felt confident that it wouldn't happen again. I don't think it was intended to be that anybody was fighting against anybody. I just, I think that there are people on this board that want to make sure we're getting it right. So it doesn't have to be, even this memorandum doesn't have to be contentious. I think that Superintendent Pontrelli said, most of the things have already been done. It's already, I don't, I don't think it's as, needs to be as big a deal as it is. But the goal is to make sure we're doing- the goal is to make sure we're doing the best for the district.
Sure, but you say that most of it's already been done, and then, for however many of you, I don't know in what way you work together.
She just said, she just said most of it's done.
So, so that's fine, and yet, you've got number, again, to the number six, and I won't even touch upon the other things, that's boldly inaccurate. So, are you going to honestly pass?
Boldly inaccurate.
Well, Jen, what we didn't know is two things that happened during the discussion. One, is Superintendent Pontralli said that most of it was done, that was news. Pontralli?
Well, no, I mean, I, but that is...
You and I did talk a little bit about...
Well, no, it was very clear, because a letter I received, this was outlined, and I talked to you about, we've already been working together to pull this report together. You told me to wait, because I'd be receiving something else. So, I didn't wait, we still went to pull it together, because I had shared with Shelley that, you know, we can make this in a timeline and a report, because as these questions have been asked, they've been asked by different people, different emails, so, all right, we'll put it in a storyline, outline, kind of, so people can follow along, so the community can follow along, know what's going on, make sure that they feel comfortable in the process. So, I did share that. And then, that same time was a community engagement meeting, because Director Pearson was in there, you asked her to step out, and so that was in process. So, you know, if you feel that you need to do everything from memorandums of understanding and letters of issuance, instead of just having a conversation, then do that, but let's make sure that the things, you know, this memorandum has some things that are inaccurate in it. So, maybe it's even working in partnership about what that would be.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to make clear that we tried, I specifically tried over and over and over to get answers, about, about one, the number two finding in here, specifically since January, the story that I was given in January is far different than what happened within our audit. And when I tried to get clarity around that, it made it more confusing. So, I have tried over and over to get answers to some of these things, so to, so to say that if you just would have asked, we could have done it, it was asked. And it was not answered.
Well, I, could, could I, could I get more?
I think we need to be more specific in what was asked and what wasn't, so we could go back through.
Corrective action, we asked over and over, what is, what corrective plan has been put in place, and we were either told the, the generic thing that I just read, or that it would be a personnel violation to give us any more information.
Is that generic thing that you read, the three-page piece from the auditor about the corrective action?
No, it was our district's response. That was the, that's exactly what it said. Plan to monitor says, the district executive director of finance and operations will ensure appropriate internal controls and procedures are updated and in place, and when asked to ask, what specific internal controls and procedures have been in place, I was not answered. And that's what we're asking.
And I'm trying to pull up what was shared with the board, I think, like in June, so, forgive me while I look for that.
Well, and I think that email, I think that email exchange in question, where I think people just weren't feeling like they were getting their questions answered, was in October sometime.
Mm-hmm, after the audit was presented. I even went to the auditors and asked them, because I didn't understand. And they, they even told me, you know, you need to CC everybody in the group to get your questions answered, and I said, I'll CC whoever I need to, I just want to know what happened, what we can put in place that it doesn't happen again, and I never received any information. And so, to say this is something from the past, this just happened. We just got this audit, and literally, ever since we've gotten the audit, I've been asking questions. If any of them had been answered, that I felt they were answered, this wouldn't have been necessary, but it wasn't. So, to say we're not working as a team, I feel like that broke down earlier than this memo.
Well, I have, in the letter that you'll be receiving, February 1st of 19, that the corrective action plan, it's a three-page plan, that I don't have in front of me right now, but that Director Hoheisel and I looked at yesterday. So, regardless of that, I think my point is, that all of the information that the board requests, we have pretty much in place, we gotta maybe pull one or two contracts to embed in this. But my point is, I guess, maybe you need to see that before you're, you know, decide whether you want to do an audit, another audit of some type. I just want the board to be clear that we can't do that internally in the amount of time requested.
Can I have more information on what you mean by internal audit? Like, is that a, are we talking about a dollar-figure timeline? I don't even simply know who to ask the question to, actually. Do you know, Mike?
No, offhand, I don't.
So, do you know, Liz, or one of you guys brought it up, so I'm just wondering?
The letter says, in several places, under, you know, each of the subsections, that we will please provide an internal review of contracts and purchases from vendors in the last three years to determine whether additional contracts, purchases were made without compliance with the competitive bidding quote law, and submit a report on the outcome of the review. So, there are several places throughout asking for that internal audit, and that's when I'm sharing that, we don't have the capacity.
Yeah, and I think, why, I think, Jen, what it's designed to get at is, like, when Liz talked about our auditor's firm, and they went to a batch, and they found it was not in compliance, they didn't keep going to see if there were more, they stopped at one. And so, the question I think they're after here, is this a one-time occurrence, or is it more prevalent than that? And we honestly don't know the answer to that.
Wouldn't we know if it's more prevalent, if, when we have an auditor that does an audit on our, I'm...
They take samples.
Yeah, the nature of an audit is to just take certain samples.
My understanding is that they followed through on those questions, and that when they went to the people, for instance, I'm gonna give the community an example of one of them. Their state statute, and the, part of what you'll see here, and I should probably just read it from my laptop, so I make sure I get it accurate, but the UG, the uniform guidance policies, the board, in 2000, oh, I think 15, made the decision to look at those compliance principles and wait for a while to put those into action. And so, they went into action in, on July 1st, and an employee made, referenced state statute instead of the new UG guidelines. They'd only been in place about six weeks, and so, corrective action was to make sure that that person knew about that, and that they would use those in the future. My understanding from our auditors, that they were happy with the information given by the people who were interviewed with that, and didn't feel like it would be another, another issue. One of the things I need to share is, you know, with, as much as our auditing guidelines and all those kind of things change, there's always a chance for human error. We have 1,000 peoples, people that work within this district, and even though you share the information, people sometimes do make mistakes. And so, no matter what we put in place, it's not, you know, we aren't gonna be able to ensure that somebody doesn't make a mistake again. We do our best to inform, and train, and follow through, but there's, you know, you can't have an organization with 1,000 people and 8,300 students and all their parents and not have people make mistakes.
Yeah, and what we're asking here for, Denise, is to put that in writing, let us study, reflect on it, and, and more importantly, is what kind of safeguards going ahead?
We have that.
Okay, thank you.
I thought, we do, and, Mike, thanks, Mike. I, again, with the internal audit, I mean, our, it seems like it's a demand in the letter. Is that accurate? It's a, it's a demand of, in the letter, it's mentioned multiple times, so...
I think it was only mentioned because we didn't have any information, and we asked for certain information, and if, it depends what comes back. If we get enough information with what comes back, I don't think that would be necessary. But the point now is, we haven't gotten, we hadn't gotten any information.
I think, yeah, and along the same lines Liz is saying, do what you got, share what you got, come as close to that date if you can, and even if it's incomplete, at that point, give it to us, let us study it, read it, consult, and, and then we'll tell you if we need more.
Then, with all due respect, Mike, I feel like you should put that in the letter, because I don't think this board is trusting the, do, do what you can, do the best you can. I don't see it. I don't see it in any way, shape, or form that this board is gonna trust, do the best you can with what you have and the time we're giving you. I, I don't. And if, and if I'm wrong, then put it in the letter, make it a revision to the letter, and take out number six while we're at it. Also, I'm wondering if there's any way you can put a line item saying Jennifer Pelletier does not support this letter.
Well, you would vote for it.
All you gotta do is vote again.
You would vote for it.
That's all you gotta do.
Still asking the question.
We wouldn't be here right now if questions were...
But, but I'd say this, the point is, I heard for the first time, the reference to May 23rd, I, I didn't have that in my mind.
That's where, you know, I think, so, I've said this time and time again, and this is, I say this to my staff all the time, if you have an email that is more than a sentence or two, it's not going to be effective, an effective way of communication. And when we get emails coming from all types of places on different questions, we try to figure out, what's the real question? And are we answering it and giving people the information we need? If we could have the conversation at the board table, then all of you here could give us feedback at one time. We're all here, we can listen, we'll take notes. This process is not one that we need, we have to figure out a different way to communicate than through emails and asking for things. And I don't know that we've had the conversation as a board with administration about this. And so, that's what I'm asking, is whether it's work sessions or here at the board table, that we can have those conversations face to face, so we understand what you need and can give you what you need. Because I can, I know I speak for our team, in that we want to give you the information you need, we don't always understand the questions that you're asking, or what you really want to know.
Thank you. Tina?
I don't, I don't like the deflection. The board has been very specific, asking for answers to the findings in the audit and the corrective actions that were taken. The answers were not given, I don't understand why it is such an issue, or, or trying to blame the board for, for not being able to communicate, when there have been several times I've asked to have this meeting to the full board, which never happened.
The board chair decides which meetings and what agenda need to happen. It's, that's what I'm trying to get at, is individuals, I've got seven individuals trying to direct and ask questions, you need to have the conversation as a board, and then give us direction.
And I, I don't want to belabor this anymore, I feel like we need to vote, but the, the questions were answered very specifically and not answered. I mean, they were asked very specifically and not answered, period. And to say that, that we didn't ask our questions with enough specificity, that just didn't happen. And if I had, you just mentioned that there's a corrective action plan that's three pages long, maybe if that would have come when I originally asked it, this wouldn't have been necessary. But all I was told was the generic statement that, that I read, and no further information from that. And you're right, if we don't look at what our mistakes are, nobody's asking for there to be an audit that is mistake-free, but we can't learn how to fix it if we don't know what happened.
Yeah. One of the things I'd, I'd just say chronology-wise, but I, I think it's important, is that several board members had asked me about the audit and about the deficiencies, and, and they gave questions that they sent, they shared what they sent, they shared the responses, and I got those. Independent of that, and I hope Shelley will forgive me, she sent me the same questions. She didn't know that other board members were saying the precise thing, and all I wrote her back was, others are asking the same thing. So, I don't think it's, it's a case of attempts weren't being made. I think what this does allow, and I appreciate that, and I respect, and, and we've said it before, we've just gotta be much, much more candid with one another.
Well, and then it should come up at our board chair superintendent meetings.
I agree, I agree.
Again, though, Mike, are, are you gonna correct the items that, I mean, what?
I think what we can do at this point is, for now, and if, let's, let's take off number six. Or, go ahead, go ahead, if you see...
I guess I feel like, at this point, we should vote on this, and if, if there are issues that you have problems with responding, then please share that informa, not you, Denise.
I'm worried about litigation. Is anyone else, I mean, because it's inaccurate.
What's inaccurate?
What's not accurate?
What's inaccurate specifically?
You have a right to ask questions.
Which is inaccurate? I'm, I'm curious.
The audit, the comment in number six, the audit, please explain to me what that means, because I asked a little bit ago and no one answered it.
Okay, here's what number six says, if I'm correct, Ms. Hoheisel has informed the school board that it should solicit requests for proposal for audit services. Explain the reasoning for this recommendation. Okay, if the reason for this recommendation is, it's the next one on the line on the chart that was given in May, then that's the answer.
Why go to these lengths?
Because they're...
It's not number six that made this memo necessary, it's everything except.
This is going to perpetuate a divide like there's no other?
No.
Not really.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? It's 10 after 10.
Yep.
Should we move the question? Is there a motion?
Yeah, well, we already moved in second.
And it's been seconded?
Yeah, we moved in second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, and raise your right hand, please.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, 5-1. It's because of the lateness of the hour, I am suggesting maybe we not do board reports. Everybody in agreement?
No.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
No, just hit the gavel.
So moved.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Motion's made, carries.
Hit the gavel.
Thank you all.
Thank you.